Welcome to the March 28, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. We will have a roll call, please, Gloria.
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity.
Present.
The Secretary is here. Board Member Catalinato.
Present.
Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham is out. We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gloria, do we have minutes to approve?
We do not today.
No minutes today. Okay, before we go into our work session, we're going to continue. We're going to take the town referral first.
Cal.
We do.
Oh, you do, okay, great.
So, this is a notice to terminate the Hampton Bays waterfront revitalization plan. I think we discussed this at one point, the application we had a couple of years ago, was it?
It was, yep. 2019 is when the town acquired the property.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, so to Bel Air Motel?
Yep, to former Bel Air Cove Motel, yes.
So, you can give us an outline and...
Sure, thank you. Kelly Doyle, Assistant Town Attorney. This is a referral from the town board to consider terminating Hampton Bays waterfront revitalization plan. The plan was adopted by a prior town board in 2019 pursuant to the urban renewal law, that's general municipal law, Article 15. The plan was adopted particularly for the property located at 20 Shinnecock Road, Hampton Bays. That's the site of the former Bel Air Cove Motel. The motel was a pre-existing, non-conforming motel. It actually turned into a situation where it was overcrowded, there were illegal housing conditions, there were numerous code violations, safety and health violations. It was very concerning. So, the plan was developed to transform this site into some sort of boutique hotel or condominium. And the idea behind that was to promote tourism in Hampton Bays and keep the property on the tax rolls. So, that was the plan for the property. So, the town acquires the property, they put out an RFP for redevelopment proposals. There were two viable proposals that were subject to a special public hearing. One was for a senior housing plan and one was for more of a boutique kind of a condominium hotel. So, at the public hearing, there were numerous overwhelming comments from the community, especially the Hampton Bays community, in opposition to any private redevelopment of this property. You know, the comments were more in favor of passive use, such as a park use. So, ultimately, the town board ended up canceling the RFP, rejecting all the proposals. And the intent now is to keep the property as a park. The first step to do that would be to terminate the urban renewal plan. And then, the plan is to keep the property as a park. It hasn't been completely decided if it will all go to CPF or maybe just half would be transferred to CPF and the other half would be retained by the town parks department. The point in doing that is that the part that would stay the parks, under control of the parks department, it wouldn't be subject to CPF restrictions in the future. So, sometime in the future, you wanted to have craft fairs or farmers markets, things like that. It wouldn't be subject to all those really strict CPF regulations. So, that hasn't been completely decided, but definitely a portion of it will go to CPF. And that is, the last thing would be that there was a loan from the general fund to acquire the property. The actual amount is 1,101,466,000. I'm sorry, 1,101,466. So, that is the actual amount of the loan that would have to be forgiven. CPF is not allowed to pay the town to acquire the property, so it would have to be donated from the town into the CPF fund.
So, that's money out of the general fund?
It is, yes.
You're still driving. Where are we going? And isn't there an opportunity to launch some kayaks from here if the park takes over?
There would be, yes, yep.
Yeah.
That's a separate, in other words, the development of the park hadn't really, hasn't really been established.
It hasn't been established. Now, the first step is just terminating this plan so we can forgive the loan and just move forward. But it will definitely be a park. It just, you know, depends on, some of it will be CPF, some of it would be general.
I think I remember when we first discussed it, we were in favor of having it a park and not developing it.
You were, I did read the comments, yes.
So, any other comments from the rest of the board?
What is our, what is our, do we do that by resolution?
Supporting the town board.
In support of the, of the...
Yep.
Okay.
I didn't know Kelly was going to be here, so I did this too. So, I have something. Basically, what I say is, this is it. Basically, what I say is that you actually recommended that it be a park. And so, I say, Plan Board supports the termination of the Hampton Bays waterfront revitalization plan for the property at 20 Shinnecock Road as a result. Does that sound good?
The hamlets have park funds, so is it possible that that money could be used rather than the general fund?
Toward to improve the park or to forgive the loan. To forgive the loan, it would just have to be from the general fund, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they, no, it's true. That's the purpose of that fund is, is to purchase and maintain parks. So...
I don't know, now that the town has already purchased it, though, if you could just, you know, take park funds to forgive the loan. We can look into it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's...
What's the question?
So, if the ham, the different hamlets have their own park funds, so could that money be used to forgive the loan to, that was used from the general fund to acquire the property?
So that it would be the...
Yeah, it might be able to. Because it is an acquisition.
Even though it's kind of an acquisition like from the town, because the town already owns it?
But it's not a CPF ownership.
No, no.
It's the town, it's a town, it's a town property.
Yeah.
Yeah, for park purposes, I mean, yeah.
We can look into it.
That's a good point.
It's a really good point.
Yeah, nobody's...
If you do it that way, and maybe it's 50/50, but would half, would the whole property then become part of the parks department as opposed to half CPF and half parks?
Let's find out how much is in the fund, parking fund first.
Should we make mention of the designation in our, in our resolution? The, this is designated park fund for Hampton Bays? Possible money to use?
Just as a part of the whereas or a resolved?
Whereas the recommendation of the town, of the Plan Board would be that the town look to Park Reserve to see if it's eligible to, for transfer.
Yeah, and if there's any money there to use it.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Nobody's brought that?
If I may ask, what's the purpose of having CPF, you know, keep part of the property?
If they kept part of it, well, everything in like the side that has the bulkhead in the water, then CPF funds could be used maybe to reconstruct the bulkhead. It does need to be reconstructed, I believe. And CPF water quality money might be able to be used for that part. And there's another also, if CPF acquired the portion with the building on it, then perhaps CPF funds could be used to demolish the building rather than town funds.
That's the property on the screen, right?
Yes, yep.
Right.
Yes.
I mean, I heard the idea of a shellfish hatchery, you know, I guess there's a lot of good possible uses for it.
Lot of good uses, yes. Yep.
Because it's a great location.
It is, yeah.
So, with that addition, Claire, okay?
Yeah, so it'll be with the recommendation that they look into using the park, district funds.
Or...
Yeah, or, yeah. For the acquisition, to repay the, the loan.
Okay, have that a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dennis. Second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent.
Thank you so much for taking the time to do this.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to close the afternoon planning session and go into a work session for Rivian, number one on the agenda. So, Planning Board, on your agendas, number seven is off. Number 19 is off. Number 20 is off. 21. And there's an addition for site plan. And there's also an addition, I think, Anthony, you had an addition of, yeah, there's an addition for 225-2501 Butter Lane. So, one addition and then all those other deletions, okay? Welcome.
Thank you.
So, please give us your names for the record. You need a chair.
Nothing, I'm going to sit right back here. They're going to do all the talking, I'm just here to observe.
There is another chair in that room.
There are chairs right in that room.
Justin Ackerman, I'm with Rivian.
Mark Specker, ResDark, Design Architect.
The architectural firm.
Stephen Rubers with Rivian as well.
So, two Rivians.
And I'm Joe Lepaaron, Delaney's attorney for Rivian.
Ah, okay, welcome. And we'll get to a chair.
So...
It's important that you... So, give us, give us an overview. This is a very important and critical site.
I know, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, what we're looking at doing here generally, I, I'll let Mark speak a little bit more to kind of the application and where we're at in that process and what we'd like to understand from this meeting. But what we're looking at doing on the site is sort of, we, we have a program that we're developing and starting to work to build across the country. They're like amenitized charging. We call them charging outposts. And so, we're going to have six of our DCFC chargers at this location. That's our ideal situation. And then, inside, it's mainly meant to have like grab-and-go snacks, a water station, a little patio area in the back where people can hang out. It's just, you, charging typically takes between like 25 and 45 minutes. And so, we want to create a space where it's Rivian branded, where we, you know, are able to get our, our brand out there a little bit and create a space where people can have their kids play during charging or hang out during charging.
Any cars?
So, there will be cars there. So, what we want to do is actually run drives out of here. So, we actually don't do sales out of any of our spaces. Technically, everything is done online through and out.
Tesla.
Yeah, just like Tesla. It's a similar model. And so, what we'd like to do here, we won't have any inventory on site and we won't have any actual display vehicles on site that we haven't like finalized yet, but we will have drive vehicles available for customers who have scheduled drives ahead of time to come on site and take a spin.
Like a test drive.
Exactly, yeah.
Before they purchase.
Yeah, like an educational drive to get into the car and, and how it handles.
No maintenance?
No maintenance, no service, nothing.
How many of those drive vehicles would you have?
I think right now, we're hoping for four.
Four.
On site. And we can, we're flexible with you guys, like depending on where they need to be on site. I think ideally, we, we would love to have them staged kind of in front of the building because what we're planning for right now, if we open it up to the floor plan later, we're having like a kind of driver's lounge here where people can hang out and wait for the vehicle and their drive time.
This is the old patio.com site.
Yeah.
Okay, right.
And so, architecturally too, we want to, the reason we were drawn to this building is like the shake, the kind of classic New England style of it, you know? And so, we want to preserve that as much as possible. Really, all we're looking at doing is improving some of the landscape. Every, with every project we do, we look at like using native species, low water, we're very like sustainably minded, and so, we always want to move in that direction. And so, really, again, looking at preserving the architecture as much as possible, cleaning up the landscape around the immediate building, adding in like a patio space, hangout on the back. And then, the idea is that we utilize this driveway in front of the building for that staging of the vehicles, if we can.
And the driveway?
Well, so, there's, it's kind of interesting because there's, there's entrance access off Montauk Highway here. It's one, I think, one way in.
You can see it up there.
Yep. And then, there's, that goes directly back to the parking lot in the back where we're looking at having the charging. And then, our, our goal was to have traffic kind of come in one way and out the other way. And then, this sort of space up here would become where the, where the drives would occur from. So, it allows us to have, you know, cars sort of seen from the street and then also easy access for customers. And it doesn't take up parking.
You're not, you're not looking to display, but yet you want to keep the cars out front for display.
I mean, ideally, but I think we're, you know, I mean, the intent wouldn't be for display. I mean, that would be a benefit, obviously, but the intent would be for the drives. And we, the reason we want to do that too is we like to preserve parking in the back for employees. We want to make sure we maximize the charging stalls and then allow for kind of future flexibility with the, with charging.
Are these charging stalls exclusive to Rivian or do they take other models, other vehicles?
So, we, our, our attachment right now is CSS, so it's relatively universal. Right now, the chargers are specific to Rivian, but just like Tesla has done recently, we're opening up our network. I think we're planning for a Q3 of this year. So, by the time this is open, we will, or hopefully open, we will definitely be open to the public.
So, you're not planning to adapt any CS charging?
They already are.
Is Rivian planning to adapt that or you still on your, on your own proprietary charging?
Right now, our chargers themselves are proprietary. So, we have a universal adapter. So, once we open those up, any, anybody with that CS charger could come. Like Tesla would have a tough time, they might need an adapter, but...
No, what I was asking was that a lot of manufacturers have adopted Tesla's charging.
Totally.
You're not planning to? Rivian isn't planning to?
To be honest, I don't know. I know that we just gained access to, to Tesla chargers, so I'm sure there's conversations happening about what that adapter looks like.
I mean, I think the assumption has to be that we've got to have a universal charge.
I completely agree.
Yeah, it's kind of stupid at the moment.
I mean, I drive an EV and it's, it's very like tough.
Yes.
I plug, I plug it in my garage.
Yeah, totally, smart.
I'd like to talk a little bit about your, your entrance and exits because I think that's an incredibly dangerous spot to have basically a convenience store like In-N-Out.
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree. I mean, our, our initial intent, and I think we, we would want to do some, whatever is required by the, by the city and county to sort of go through the necessary studies to understand what traffic flow is going to be. But our initial intent, without really driving this route every day, would be to have one in kind of one out. So, it's not the most convenient way of getting in, but it reduces potential...
But if you're coming from the west on Hampton Road.
Yeah, today you took a left.
County Road 39.
In there.
It's tricky.
Which was tricky.
Because you've got basically two lanes going into one. And so, that traffic bottlenecks now without having a car or cars trying to make that left.
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, what we, I think a traffic study is probably in order to just prove that we can manage.
It might also shed some light on how you plan on using the property in terms of having these vehicles in the front that are the test vehicles. You might think about having two or three that are not test vehicles, they're just display there and have your test vehicles somewhere circulated in the back. Teresa, is, is that a survey line around the property?
That is the approximate property line.
So, that corner is not part of it?
No, that's part of the road right of way or County Road 39 and State Road.
So, if a traffic circle were ever to go in there, there would still be sufficient space?
And obviously, being on the intersection of Montauk Highway and County Road 39, they should, you should reach out to the DPW and for the, the state DOT.
Yeah, okay.
You know, because I would think that one of them may want to close off that and exit onto the, onto the...
County Road 39.
County Road 39, because it is a danger, it's very dangerous.
On the west, okay, gotcha.
It's a very dangerous intersection there, there's tons of cars that go through. So, you definitely don't, at minimum, they would probably want to make sure there's no lefts there.
Absolutely.
You know, but, but just exit only at, you know, at, you know, minimum. But I would see for Steven one of them.
You're right where the two jurisdictions meet, although the state does control that intersection.
Yeah.
They would be in control, but reaching out the both is a good idea.
27 is the State Road and County Road 39 is County.
And this is a very heavily trafficked road. But getting back to the, the vehicles and the parking of the vehicles, you're going to need to talk to the zoning board of appeals, right? Because that is in the front yard.
Yep.
And you can't really have the displays like that in the front yard. So, you know, that's, that's something that needs to get discussed with the zoning board of appeals. If the, if the planning board feels that this is, should proceed the site plan, you should, you know, initially make your application to, to, to the planning board, but then file with the zoning board so that we can get a little bit...
Do we want them to have display in the front?
No.
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 So, that's jumping it.
No, you shouldn't go to the zoning board.
This to me is sort of like a, a working plan, which is why you're here with us.
But if you pull up a car and the person jumps in, nobody's going to give you a violation.
You know what I'm talking about, yeah.
Okay, I got you.
So, ask us some questions.
Yeah, a question that I have, and I, I think part of the understanding that this is where the display vehicle or, you know, test drive vehicles are. My assumption was this was during hours of operation, right? So, is there a change in mindset if this is here, you know, when during the hours of operation, people can test out their vehicles, then they bring the vehicles after hours into the back, you know, as a temporary, you know, you're driving up, tested, bring your vehicle in the back.
Was your question, can you leave them overnight out front?
No, my, my, I guess, I guess I want to prevent the confusion that it's not a display vehicle in the sense that it's permanently staying there. It's there temporarily, test drive, driven, and then brought back to the back.
We prefer to not have cars in the front.
Sure.
That they're, they're, the few places where we've got car dealerships, they've put in berms or...
Sure.
To screen out.
To.
Okay.
We want, we want nature there, not...
Yeah, if you look at the side across the street, which is, I think, what's the patio about, you'll, no, not like, not the diner, yeah, directly across the street, you see the landscaping in the front?
Here?
Yeah, or adjacent to it. That's kind of the model we, we look to achieve on the, you see, to, to sort of eliminate the asphalt in front of these locations.
Street trees.
But obvious question to Teresa, what is this use?
Yeah, I mean, that's really, you know, we have been considering it as, as an automotive dealership, right, a car sales.
Is it an automotive dealership?
Well, if they're not actually doing sales out of there, I don't, I don't really know.
Sales are a name.
They're selling electrons.
Yeah. So, I guess we would have to look at that a little bit more closely to see what kind of use it is.
It is very unusual and we, you know, I spoke to this gentleman a few times about this. We'll probably have to get an interpretation from the building inspector at the end of the day, but because it's, it's advertising, it's, it is people coming to look at these cars before they purchase them, there is, I think there is a nexus to the car dealership personally, but we, we should double check with them. The other thing, go ahead.
No, I guess that's an interesting thing because the closest use this really comes to, if you think about it, is a gas station.
Yeah.
Ironically, it used to be...
It's like a service station, a convenience store.
With a convenience store in principle, except we're not really...
It used to be a Sunoco station.
Really?
If we go back to the...
Was it really?
Oh, yeah, yeah. This is going back 40, 50 years.
Wow, exactly.
Sunoco station for years and...
I like that story.
So, do we need to test the soil?
You will, you will remember.
We have a newly established traffic mitigation task, but is that, that's what it's called, right? Traffic mitigation task force?
Yes.
Maybe this is a question to Tom. Would it be advisable for them to reach out to the traffic mitigation task force to come up with the best and safest route? Or would that be up to highway?
For?
For their test drives?
Well, I can suggest one right now, which is you take a right out. You go right, you go right, and you go right and you come back.
I don't think we should be...
That's what a lot of dealerships do. Dealerships don't want you taking lefts either, so...
When you do a test drive, yeah.
Craig, we could, that may be something we could talk about.
No. That, that committee is very specific for what you guys are charged with doing and this is, well, definitely outside of that, but...
That's fair.
Just to go back to the, the use here, I was looking at the plans and there's a trailer charging. I just want to clarify that there is no overnight parking, correct?
No, 100% no overnight parking. We are, I do want to note though, that the, the goal of it is that the chargers are open 24 hours.
It's like a service station.
Yeah, it's, it's a gas station with a convenience store.
Yep.
But it's not gas.
Exactly, yeah.
You would have some vehicles parked there that are, you're keeping there?
The test drive vehicles.
The, yeah.
Contesting, so there is some limited overnight park.
Correct, yeah. But no, they won't be occupied, no.
Nobody sleeping over, right. And then, also, are you, with respect to the use, are you, when a person purchases a vehicle, are there, is there going to be delivery of the vehicle at the side or is the vehicle delivered direct to the purchaser?
It's either delivered direct to the purchaser or they go to like a specific, I think we call them last mile centers, which is where they pick up the vehicle.
Okay, because I would have some concern about...
And it's usually service centers.
Trailer, you know, vehicle trailer park, circulation.
Totally, yeah, yeah.
And then, just looking over at your site plan, I did notice that your plan calls for backlighting of the signs. That's not going to happen, I'll be honest with you.
Okay, great, love to.
The other, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you may notice that they, your neighbor to the, your possible neighbor to the east, we've had them put in sidewalks as part of their redevelopment of that site, so...
The state requires that.
I think we required it.
I think in that case you did.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah.
But in keeping with that buffer in the front and the street trees, that probably would be a good thing to continue down.
Do you know what would, would trigger that? Would our just application pretty much trigger it?
Or you submit a revised site plan. I mean, this is just a working, thinking, conceptual drawing, right?
Yeah.
What about cross-access here, anything?
I don't know if we have cross-access or properties to the east and to the west. I can do some research on that.
This has a general cross-access and this has real cross-access to each other. You can see this connection here between all these car dealerships.
This is the vacant site between them.
And then, there's the pro, this property here, but this has cross-access.
What is that, so parking?
That was an old barn at one point.
This one is owned by the people who are leasing to them.
Yeah.
Same owners as that.
Yeah.
And were there excess cars parked there at one point?
There are.
There are now. I actually drove by yesterday and saw.
There are.
Yeah.
And then, you have a cafe, you have Hampton Coffee right next door. You have a little path that goes from your place to there and they can have coffee there.
I think they want, they want coffee.
Well, part of what we want to discuss is potentially having like a small coffee. So working with, we're like, having loose conversations with local coffee shops to potentially have like a little satellite for them.
Well, Hampton Coffee is right there.
Yeah, okay, well, shoot.
You know, when you figure out what you're gonna do, right? If you, we may need the interpretation from the building inspector as to whether or not this is a service station or a car dealership, and then having a coffee shop in relation to those, whether that's an accessory use or a second use, and if it's a second use, you'll have to go to the zoning board for that second use. So that's something that we need to reach out to the building inspector about as to whether or not that's considered, you know, a second use. Or first, we gotta determine what the actual use is, and then whether this coffee shop would be an ancillary use to that.
And would we be making that outreach for those determinations, or would this body be doing that to the building inspector?
I think you should do it ahead of time, because there is only one step process with this. It's why I wanted to bring it to you. There's no pre-submission here, because it's type-two action environmentally.
So what I would suggest you do is write a cover letter saying, hey, this is what we're doing. You know, we're trying to determine the use, whether it's a car dealership, a service station, and then we also want to do this. Is it ancillary to the primary use? And maybe give them a copy, email them a copy of the site plan.
Just summarize our operations and, okay, cool.
And maybe request a meeting so you can have the backboard.
Do you have any other drawings there?
Yeah. One question with the coffee shop too. If it was sort of operated by Rivian employees, but like, let's say Hampton Coffee supplied the coffee or something?
So that's again his interpretation of whether that's accessory to...
Accessory to.
Yeah.
And the use, what is that use?
I mean, if it's a courtesy, the way some of the gas sta, not gas stations, but when you bring your car in dealerships, you know, they have a lounge, and they have coffee and television.
Yep.
Right, that's kind of what, this sounds more, rather than a coffee shop, it sounds more like what Jackie is saying, a lounge.
Did we ever go to the patio dot com whole site? We spent a lot of time on that. Did we ever look at that and see what the recommendations were for that?
I haven't.
You mean the cross-access and things like that?
The landscaping, what we were gonna do with the front.
There was a whole application.
Oh, no, I remember that building was a triangle.
Not the building, but what we were gonna do with the, were we gonna close up the asphalt at the front?
Oh, I think, you know what happened with that one? Actually, I probably could bring it up. But there was gonna be an entrance here as it is, right? And then all the way to the right would be a right-only.
Right.
That's right.
You know, that was the point in the redivision.
And then we, then the whole front was just gonna be...
Gonna be the building with the parking in the back.
Right, anything in the back, just greenery in the front.
You know where the exit is now, where you want people to come out? You better, should think about that, because that's a really bad angle, right, Tom? And people may say, I don't ever want to drive here anymore, and they will buy a car.
You're trying to look over your shoulder to see what's coming and what's training.
Because, yeah.
Oh, 'cause it's such a acute angle.
It's an acute angle.
And the cars, if the traffic is moving, they're moving.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that's why, when we did the, someone came into the site plan several years ago, new, modern building, et cetera, and that's where we moved the exit. That driveway was out, was it?
Interesting.
Right along the west property line.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Which makes the most sense.
Okay.
And not where it is, and so you have an opportunity there to do some beautiful landscaping and to really make it attractive.
Yeah.
Because it is an important corner, and it's very unattractive.
Lots of furniture.
What else, signage?
Signage, I did actually want to ask about really quickly is, there's an existing sign, monument sign, like right along Montauk Highway, that's clearly sort of within...
It's in that triangle?
Probably the public right-of-way.
It's in our property. But I'm just wondering if there's a concern with any setbacks, or if we're allowed to like replace that in kind, or...
Well, you have to go to the, you have to submit a sign application, right? And get ARB approval for it?
Well, if it's, the setback's not met, which is twenty feet, then it's whether it had variance, but there's only a board of appeals or not. If it didn't, then you would have to make either, make it conforming, or you go back to the zoning board of appeals if you want it to remain in that space.
We would prefer that it be made conforming. Are you thinking of a sign on the building itself, or as a monument sign?
I see you have something here with the Rivian.
We do, I mean, this is all very conceptual again, and we did get feedback that roof signs are a big no-no's. And so what we were talking about doing is potentially something a little bit more like this. Like, there's an existing patio dot com sign here. There's one here, and then there's another one kind of on this peak. And so we were looking at potentially doing just this Rivian here in lieu of the existing patio dot com, and then just our, what we call the compass, the logo, like a little one of those on either peak of the building.
Do they have two sides? Are they entitled to two sides, because it's a corner property?
They can, yes, if it's facing different roads, yeah.
Yeah, facing different...
So would this be considered three sides?
It's considered two.
Okay.
Get two definitely.
I think you'd be able to do two. The east one doesn't face a road, so if there's one on the east side.
Okay.
But that's in addition to the sign by the road?
Yeah, you can do, yeah.
Two on the building and one at the road.
You could do that, because of the frontage.
I'm trying to remember what that one on the road looks like.
It's a big white one.
Yeah.
You can pull the street view.
But I guess, so if we're required to make that conforming, that means we have to push it back twenty feet. We're pretty much like demoing and replacing.
So that's in the right-of-way, right?
No, it's on their property.
It's on their property.
Yeah, you can see the shadow here. Do you see where the cursor is?
It might be twenty feet.
Oh, twenty feet from the curb?
From the property line.
From the property line.
It might, it might be close.
Sorry, I keep...
Oh, you're fine.
But again, well, you know, I mean, if you change that driveway to the recommendation that we're saying, take it further west, then that whole driveway becomes...
You have a large piece of property at the front.
Non-functional, you know? You have a big piece of property to do something on.
And that driveway reconfiguration, that was part of a prior site plan improvement?
It was, yeah, yeah.
We'd spend a lot of time on it.
Yeah. Because someone came in and was going to knock this building down, put up a contemporary building. I remember, because it was a lot of glass. And when that's lit up at night, all night long, it looks like the Queen Mary, you know? I mean, it's a real...
It's also blinding when you drive.
Blinding to drive. So you have to...
That's it.
There you go. You sign a screen.
Yeah, he's just showing us some...
Oh, that's the old site.
Oh, wow. How could you take a left-hand turn into that?
No. There's no left-hand turn.
That's right in.
That's in, that's right in.
Sir?
It's a double, it's a right-in and only...
Yeah, there's a median there, you can't make that.
That's okay. They just said from the oil.
Right-in and a right-out.
I think in this case, we just want the right out.
It's just a...
Just the right out.
And then the front was all greened out, greened in.
Yes.
Yeah. So...
Yeah, so as far as what we were initially planning on doing with the site, assumption was four typical charging posts along the back, a handicap charging post, and then a trailer stall charging post. So if you have a trailer on your vehicle, you can pull through without having to try and detach and get into a parking spot.
That's a trailer you saw?
Correct. The transformers and equipment needed to operate those chargers were planning on existing in this small zone within the ten-foot side yard setback and the fifty-foot front yard setback. So it leaves just a really small triangle of all of the remaining lot to try and put that in. So that's where we were initially planning on having that. As far as the visual exterior uses, we're looking at demoing one of the windows along the west wall, replacing that with a door, so you have twenty-four-hour restroom access. The assumption was you charge your vehicle there. The charging post gives you a code to use for the restroom. So it's not public restroom, but it is accessible if you're there using their functions. Removing the current egress door here and putting a double door meant to reestablish a main entry along the back, as opposed to the front. But the assumption was, you know, you have your main entrance here, and then if you're able to do your test drives, the thinking was you could kind of have this as the waiting area. This is your main entrance. But as far as exterior changes, you're looking at infilling this door, matching the siding, removing the window here, replacing that with a double door, removing this window here, using that as a restroom. And then potentially, this is where we're looking at the coffee component, using this as a walk-up order window to the exterior.
And what is in the front?
I'm sorry?
What's in the front here?
This is gonna be back-of-house, office, break room, that sort of thing.
Passing the renderings, right?
Sure, of course. That is a little obvious, but yeah.
Most of us are at a serious disadvantage, because we're not...
It's really like a real coffee shop, not with coffee and M&amp;K, like a couple of machines where you can make your own coffee.
That's the idea.
So it's a retail, it looks like a real retail store. You've got merchandise.
We would have merch, yeah.
Yeah. So retail.
So, I mean, once you get an interpretation from the chief building inspector, you should also reach out to the Suffolk County Department of Health to determine whether or not the change of use is going to affect your sanitary flow and whether you have to upgrade the septic system, because that'll all have to be part of your site plan application.
Okay. We've already discussed with them, and we're, we were just actually onsite meeting with Septic Company to engineer to figure that out. But it is good to know that we'll need that included for our application as well.
Yeah, I'd hate to have you go and go through the site plan process and then find out you have to do a septic and come back to us.
Yeah.
Right. So, yeah, as you're kind of seeing in the renderings a little bit, the idea was to have merchandise here, some of the grab-and-go snacks along this casework here, and then this coffee component along this back-of-house area. Again, break room, some offices, and then driver waiting area with some storage along the back, and then maintaining these existing restrooms and electrical room. Two restrooms. One accessible to the exterior, one...
Employees and customers.
Correct. The exterior one is ADA accessible. The current condition of the interior one is not accessible, but, you know...
And the merchandise, is that also complimentary, or is that for sale?
No, that's for sale.
Wouldn't that affect...
It's a retail operation. Retail.
Yeah, you have a convergence of uses here, I think that might be in conflict. I'm curious to see how that all sorts itself out.
That's, it's best if you put your package together, submit it to the chief building inspector, request a meeting, and ask for a written interpretation, so that we know where we need to proceed, whether or not you need additional variances for the multitude of possible uses, and then we can proceed.
It really sounds to me more like a gas station with a convenience store.
I guess my understanding of thinking of this as a, if you were to think of it as a dealership, right? It's not, my imagination would be, it's not that far-fetched for a dealership to also sell some of their merchandise in there as well. You know, similar to the coffee, that's kind of adjacent to what a typical dealership would operate.
But you're not selling cars.
Cars, you're not selling or servicing cars.
You're not selling or servicing.
Sure, but I guess my thinking is that you're marketing your vehicle in a way as well. You know, maybe you're not specifically selling it. But I think if there was a, if we were to no longer be a closed state, for example, then I think that's something Rivian would look at as well, you know, if that was an opportunity. So I hear what you're saying. I do think there is some similarities to how a dealership would function.
You're gonna need the use that pretty much puts a, you know, encompasses all the things you want. You may not get all the things you want.
Sure.
You may get some of it.
Understood.
Kind of like a hybrid. But there is a repair component, because the charging would probably be interpreted as a repair maintenance component, like oil change.
But no, it'd be like a gas station, like a pump. You'd have gas, you're getting it out.
Yeah, but, yeah.
I mean, that seems to be the closest to put this widget in this bus.
Yeah, this is interesting. So we had Tesla not too far, long ago, but there was a component of maintaining those cars that they had that this does not have.
The charging is a lot longer than gas.
Yes, yeah.
That's why you might interpret it as a maintenance repair operation as opposed to...
See, if you were to swap a battery, maybe you could have a dealership.
My husband had the same idea. Service stations with swappable batteries.
I lived and talked about it for a decade, for a decade, and nobody's been able to really make it happen.
Any other questions for us? It's so good to have a work session, by the way.
No, this is great.
Great, yeah, no, I appreciate it.
We really appreciate the direction. There's a lot of issues.
It's easier for us, and it's easier for you.
And this is something that we've not seen before.
Yeah, and we're running into that with a lot of jurisdictions, you know, and so with the multiple use. We have one opening in Groveland, which is right outside of Yosemite in California this spring, and then we have another one outside of Joshua Tree. So also, they're located next to kind of all these like beautiful, you know, places where people want to recreate. That's kind of the point of them, too.
And then you found this corner.
We fell in love with that building.
Charging EV operation through its energy sustainability plan. And to that extent, the more operations like yours, we can get going.
Well, and I think that was one question we actually had before we leave is whether or not the possibility would be open for us to phase in the charging. So like, if we were able to apply for the permit for the charging early, get that built and installed while it's still operating as patio dot com or whatever, it's still, you know? And then we're able to sort of run permits concurrently, so that we're not holding up the charging operation. We can get that installed.
Well, this is an active CO.
Tesla, when they put in the charging stations up on thirty-nine.
Yeah, well, it's accessory to the use, the parking lot, right? That's a possibility, I think. The boards comply.
That big strip on County Route thirty-nine, that first came in, we put in about six spots for charging stations.
You have the one in Hampton Bays now, Hampton Bays Center.
We have to get the use established first.
Watermill House.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah, so I think that's, I would say that's true.
I would encourage patio dot com to kind of clean up their...
As long as they have a CO, you know?
Yeah, they have a truck body in the back. I mean, I did go by the site yesterday, so, yeah, so it needs a little cleanup. A little cleanup.
You don't like the patio strewn about?
Oh, yeah, I know. It's interesting.
Did we mention solar? Should we mention solar?
We should mention solar. We have a climate action plan. We're encouraging everybody to use solar.
A lot of southwest exposure on that roof.
We actually, in our renderings and in the elevations, are planning to incorporate solar right here along that south-facing roof. So that's something that we're wanting to incorporate as well.
And use that for the electricity to charge the cars.
That's right, that's right.
In Joshua Tree, it's in the middle of the desert. We're doing these canopies like over all the charging stalls that are solar.
You could do that here, too, in addition to the roof.
Interesting.
Possibly.
Yeah, and again, I know we have a moratorium, but this would, to me, would be a good use to have a battery store just in the stuffy...
A little bit of charge out of the whole house.
I'm basically running the house on my solar. And it's still...
And I still sell...
They do have on the market charging stations powered by solar above the parking space.
Yes.
We were approached when I was at the town to buy some of those.
These DCFCs, they're the fast chargers, so they're the twenty-five to forty-five. They require a significant...
I was just about to say, you probably can't use that for fast charging.
Right, right.
What are you, what, three hundred, six, what, three hundred?
I honestly, I...
Six hundred?
I would have to like look it up, but yeah, it's pretty intense, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll start with the building.
Start with the...
Yeah.
If you need, Teresa, you might be able to dialogue with the thing.
Absolutely.
Start with Anthony, Anthony, you might be able to dialogue with him if he needs to have some questions.
Absolutely, you can give us a call, email me, uh, per, you know, email, and so you can just email me anytime.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we're closing the work session, opening the afternoon session, and we're going to go right to Anthony, we're going to take ninety North Seamy Cut Road?
I, I spoke to the applicant right before we started, we're gonna just do an extension until March twenty-fifth.
March, April?
I'm sorry, April twenty-fifth, um, April-
Twenty-fifth, and the eleven.
April twenty-fifth, okay, motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor, opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent.
All right. Chicken Brier Hill.
You want me to jump to you?
I think it's the next one. They're looking at it all.
No, I'm looking at the old one, wait a minute, okay.
Number three is Chicken Brier.
Okay, number three, Chicken Brier?
Number three is Chicken Brier.
Yeah, okay.
I don't see it.
You know, they have the new, they renumbered them, so three is Chicken Brier.
Yeah, but where was it before? Where was, because I don't, I don't see it.
It was, it's on the most recent agenda.
It was not on, it was never on the agenda.
It's on the one that I have, but, okay.
But you snuck it in, Anthony, with two-two-five.
This one I put on on Friday, I really did.
It was, trust me, it was not there.
It was not on, okay, so it's number three on the new agenda, Chicken Brier Hill, thirty-eight North Bay Avenue.
This was the one where we talked about the park fee, where we had charged the park fee, and then Dave Wilcox had come back and talked about the trail, remember, we said there was open space dedicated, and Dennis suggested, let's find out what the trails had to say, before we, you know, say that they could get a refund back. So, by the way, this was just a very, very honest mistake, I didn't work on the pre-app, at the time of the pre-app, the pre-app report said no comments from the Trails Advisory, the day after the pre-app was adopted, the Trails Advisory Board had a meeting and sent over, or sent over comments, says the Southampton Trails Advisory Board reviewed this application, we are in favor of the reduced density open space plan, we would request a trail across the open space as shown, crossing town owned land to the south could then link to North Bay Avenue with East Pond Lane, further down East Pond Lane, there could be a trail link to the creek, because there actually is some type of, you know,
Oh, yeah.
private thing over here, so they did in fact make a trail recommendation, it came in after the fact, and then what happened was, we did the final application, the Trails Advisory saw that the open space is being dedicated to the town, and, and it's part of their previous recommendation, so they didn't really provide any further comments, because they saw that was getting dedicated to the town, but in fact, they did make a recommendation for the trail through the open space in twenty nineteen, when you did the actual thing, so.
So what's our action now?
And the action then would be to just recommend the refund of the park fee, for the record, the park fee that they paid was nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents, they actually paid too much money, I had the right amount in my resolution, the attorney thought I made a mistake, so they had the applicant pay more. Nevertheless, the refund would be nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents, how do you feel, Dennis?
I think we should give it to them.
Yeah, get a trail.
Yeah, get the trail.
Trail would be nice, and where else a trail would come down through that little bit of the town open space there?
Yeah, well, the thing is, we have, you know, we have some town land over here, you know, you have the road over here, the open space connects, so the idea is that maybe you could get down, come up here, we've had some trail recommendations for a piece of property that we were looking at, subdivision somewhere up here, so they're trying to like piece it all together, and-
It would be helpful to us that when these requests come in, that we just see an overlay of the updated trail map, so we know where we're looking at.
Yeah, for sure.
Trails?
I bet you can sort of see to the north, to the south, and actually is another one in here, that was part of the homeowners association.
I thought they wanted to come down, and then to that road, and then-
Yeah, well, they're, they're looking at all these pieces in here as well, to make the connection, so.
Those are feeder trails.
So the refund would be tied to a dedication of land for the trail?
The open space has already been dedicated to the town.
Oh, it's already been dedicated.
It's already been dedicated with the recommendation that a trail go through there.
Which is fixing groups.
They're waiting for their money.
Okay, so, motion? Motion by Gloria, second by Craig, all in favor, opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent.
Anthony, are the trails marked? Are the trails marked?
The existing trails, or?
What do you mean by, what do you mean by marked?
If we're gonna have a trail easement there, will it, will it be marked? I know, I know sometimes when-
No, it's not gonna be delineated, the town owns the property now, so the trails could go in there and, you know, say where they want it specifically.
But if there's a trail easement?
You're asking about markers on the ground, or on the trees?
Yeah, great ones if we're walking on the tree.
Wayfinding marks?
What, what happens when there's a trail easement, and if the Trails Group wants to actually cut the trail, they will go with somebody from GIS that has the equipment on their backs, so that they could, they could actually make sure, if it's like only twenty foot wide, that they know exactly where they are and they mark it.
So they'll cut the trail?
So like that big trail, I mean, if you, how do you walk that trail if you, if you want to walk it?
How do you know it's there?
How do you know it's there? Is there a trail?
Oh, I, this specific trail, there's a lot of trails in the di-
Well, that's up to the Trails.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, George.
I mean, anything that's marked, you will have on the GIS system, if you look at that, that version of the map.
Yeah, I, I have to believe there's something, because of having our GIS.
And the, the public have access to delineated and cut trails?
Yes.
Particularly when the town, now this is town open space, so, yeah, all public.
If you go on to the town's website, you can, there's a whole lot of trails where you could actually print out, paint trails, and the Trails Group every weekend advertises two hikes.
So Claire, you're up next, Sandy Hollow? Sandy Hollow, followed by Atlantic Gulf, followed by one fifty cent, yeah, it's all you.
Okay, so Sandy Hollow, we were just tightening this up, so we had gone over the pre-submission report, I'm gonna pass that out to you.
Thank you.
And I think Wayne's coming in.
On Zoom?
Kevin?
On Zoom, Claire?
So if you're good with that, I'll just read the recommendations out.
Yeah.
So the first one, um, says, I planted Kate's existing rows of trees here, I'll put the-
Do we have it up?
Yeah, put it up. This is where they're changing it from the car repair transmission place to this landscape contractor use on the property. I actually went out there yesterday, the building actually looks attractive, it's very presentable, so I took that comment out under the appearance, and then these trees are substantial, forty foot tall.
Where, Claire?
The ones right here, along the road, they're substantial, well, well thick, you know, effective screening to the property, so that's all good, the only thing, maybe we had mentioned that this fifty feet they're establishing here, that this be planted out, and then the twenty feet we want on the west side.
Right.
Yeah, so those are, that's number one, number two, we talked about the trailers, they have one trailer here on the west side, and these trailers are being lined up at the fifty foot line, so we'll just relocate that. It's a special exception use, number three, the drainage, so it is gravel in these locations, it's only paved here, it'll be referred to the town engineer, we'll have his comments with that. Secra, it's an unlisted action, you had said that the archaeological wouldn't be required, because it's been a disturbed site, but you did mention the impact of groundwater, because it was a repair shop, so any environmental assessments would be relevant to your secret review, six is about the fifty foot buffer, and I think at the time, you recommended like a low fence at the two buffers, so it was very delineated. Just note the fencing, which is seven, architectural facades, they're not proposing any changes, but that one building is, is in good condition, the other ones are trailers and will be screened, so it should be good. Dumpsters existing on the property, there'll be referral to DBW about the three accesses on the property. Septic system, health department review, screening and mechanicals, and the lighting, so far, what I've seen on the lighting on the site is in conformance, but we'll just make sure that it is during the process.
Just representing this?
Wayne, hi Wayne.
Good afternoon, I, I think this is everything we discussed at the last meeting, and Claire's covered it well, and we'll try to address everything with our final cycle.
Good, any other questions on the board? Motion to adopt it?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Tom, all in favor, opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent. Adopted, Wayne, thank you.
Thank you, sitting around for Atlantic.
Okay, that's the name of Atlantic.
So, where's your signal?
So Atlantic, we had gone through the staff report last meeting, and you were amenable to the, I think, you want to come up? I'm gonna pass out the decision, so I've just prepared a resolution, if you want to, in this case, we'll go through the conditions, or do you want to talk about anything in particular?
We have talked it over and over.
Okay, I'll go through the conditions, I'll go over there.
My only, my only comment is, there was an ad in the paper last week for an eight bedroom, ten and a half bath house next door.
Just a small house?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a new house, I think it's back a little bit, but it's, it's one of your neighbors.
So if you have overflow.
That was sort of an editorial comment.
So before you get into the resolution there,
Yeah.
I just wanted, you made this comment before, we forward it to you, the health department approval, and I think it would be good in your findings, in your staff report, that you acknowledge that.
Yeah, I did need to put the date of the health department approval in there, I probably didn't, so I will reference the date of the health department approval. Oh, actually, is that what's there?
For example, on page eight, section A.
We've seen this many times.
I think that's just the other side, I think it was a couple days.
Page eight, which one, Wayne?
Subject to K, had a provision for collection disposal, stormwater runoff, and said there is sewage, and the response.
Oh, I see, yeah, health department approval.
And that health department already approved the plan.
Okay.
And I'll put the date of the approval in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, all right, Claire.
Okay, I just wanted to pull up the actual aerial for you, so this is the locations in this cleared area on the property. I'll go through the conditions, so it is a special exception, so, and when we went through the special exception standards under three, page three, oh, actually, it is also a wetlands permit, so let me take a peek at that, so the first resolved on bottom page one is to, you're granting a wetlands permit for the project. The first, one through ten, are general conditions on every wetlands permit, one through six are the general, are the specific ones for this project, A, that it conforms to the approved plan, two, I'm sorry, that's one, two, all project limited fencing should be installed prior to commencement of work, three, all proportions of the proposed driveway and parking areas, with the exception of the required ADA compliant parking space, need to be built with permeable material, pavers, or cellular grass, reinforced concrete surfaces to allow for rainwater infiltration and catchment of runoff, per town code. So, we, we went back with a little bit this week about this, and he's provided a plan that shows that, that just the ADA will have the compliance, so we'll refer to that.
Originally, we had from the road in, we have to have the apron, has to be paved, and then here is where the ADA is, so it'll be stone here and there.
Nice, good.
Four discusses the hundred foot non-disturbance non-fertilization buffer that'll be established through an easements, five is the housing should be equipped with leaders and gutters to accommodate the three inch rainfall, and then six is no pesticides or fertilizer will be used in the portion of the site area to be denoted in the declaration of covenants associated with the staff housing, so, that's the wetlands permit, and then the second resolved would be the approval of the special exception use for living quarters for golf course employees, subject to the following condition, the living quarters use, uses shall cease if the eighteen hole golf course use ceases to operate on the property, and-
Can we just dwell on that? So, I can't imagine the Atlantic would ever cease operation, but who knows? What's to, how would we want to work that condition? You have a residential structure and a residential zone that now cannot be used as a residence?
It can't be used as living quarter, well, they'd have to go get a change of use to a single family residence, or whatever residential use is permitted in the zone, right?
Is it, is that the good language of living, the living quarters that kind of suggests?
Can you hear, Wayne?
I can, I understand what Claire is trying to say, and I understand what Dennis is suggesting, I believe that if the golf course were ever deceased, then the question, what happens to all the uses and everything on the property? It would require some sort of change of use and other review and approval. I think that the condition, if you, it's fine as it is, it's just a condition, so.
Okay, as long as we weren't, you know, opening up the, who knows?
I mean, do you want me to specify the living quarters for the golf course employees?
Would that be good, Wayne?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, for the golf course, yeah, that might be, maybe that's what I was looking for.
Okay.
That leaves it open to whatever they want.
Living quarters for single family residents, or two family, if it's permitted, yeah, okay.
Well, it says employee housing, so.
Yeah, some more employee housing, good.
Okay, I'll put that right in that condition, and then the third resolved is to adopt the staff reports and approve the site plan, and the conditions are, and some of these have been met, but they're just being repeated, one A is indicate the location of the proposed hundred foot non-disturbance non-fertilization buffer labeled as an easement around the tire short pond, B indicate the location of the proposed trail easement, twenty-five feet wide, with, C indicate the location of the proposed view shed easements, D indicate the driveway and parking lot to be permeable materials, with the exception of the ADA parking space and walkway, could cut this out of that? And the changes to the landscape plan, the trail easements, the view shed easements, the meadow maintenance plan, which is noted on the plans, and indicate the driveway and parking lot, so when I wrote this, I hadn't had this plan that he submitted, so that'll be the plan incorporated.
Do, are we including view shed in that, or not?
It's in there.
The view shed?
Uh, two B, says the view shed, but it is reflected on the plans already, so, yeah, so this is kind of a restating of that.
Yeah, just like, there's a drawing, which is strictly, well, it's not, it's actually, all of the easements are on one sheet.
Oh, good, that's nice.
So it's a simple.
So three A, area disturbance shall be staked out prior to construction, B, compliance with the fire marshal, C is a screening of the HVAC systems, D is no dusted off fixtures, C is the compliance with outdoor lighting, F is three thousand Kelvin or less for the lighting, no public address system is G, H is site inspections, and that's related to the engineering inspections, four A, submission of lighting fixtures for the building, B is any engineering fees, it's twenty-five hundred dollars in this case, affidavit, D is success of plans, and then prior to issuance of building permit, secure health department approval, submission of the covenants, submission of a hundred foot buffer easements, D submission of conservation preservation scenic easement, E's the trail easement, F is the land bank covenant for the six parking spaces, and six A is maintenance responsible landscaping.
I think you should delete the word on five, on A, to secure health department approval, just say health department approval, I mean, they already have it, right?
They have, yes.
So I would take out secure, because it says items to be submitted completed.
Okay.
Other than that, it's, looks good.
Great.
Yeah, Wayne, any issue?
I was just gonna comment, just like Jackie did, on the health department, the thing, as Claire has indicated, appropriate for the record, that many of these items have been submitted, are part of the plans, including we have previously submitted legal documents, which we'll review, we will do again, but I just want to make sure that the board had done a substantial review the first time around, and now with the added conditions, you've added more scrutiny to this plan, and the conditions, everything that's been stated in there, we can meet and have accepted previously, so we're okay with the resolution as proposed, as amended, as discussed here today.
Great, so, we're gonna adopt this now?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second by Dennis, all in favor, opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent. I hope we see you again one day, thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
After, it's nice being here. Three years, well, who knows?
We've aged since.
Three years, five years, I lost count.
Okay, Claire, one fifty-seven West Montauk Highway.
Could I ask a name?
Oh.
Also known as the Hampton Bay's diner.
Yes.
Matt Ellard and Alex Barmenti, architect, an engineer.
Here's a couple small versions, I'll share that, I have bigger versions, do you want to, please put one in the middle, and then, careful of the-
Don't put it over the mic.
Yes, please, unless somebody wants to, or if I just couple. So, let me give you a report. And you have a, you have a comment, right?
Yes, we have.
So this is the pre-submission conference report for the project, and it is an existing diner building, but it hasn't been used since a diner in a bit, it is considered like part of the gateway to Hampton- It is considered like part of the gateway to Hampton Bay. So I think a lot of the comments at the public hearing, I'll just speak to that, was about the presentation, how it would look in the fronts. And then, I guess, they have a sign here for the hamlet of Hampton Bay is right there. So, the site plan is approval for two buildings, eight thousand and fifty-eight square feet and about six thousand square feet for medical office and office uses on a one-point-nine-four acre point, sorry, one-point-nine-four acre parcel approved of the existing diner building located in HB zoning district situated at one fifty-seven West Montauk Highway. In the hamlet of Hampton Bay. Pre-submission conference was held on January twenty-fifth. The following comments were received during the conference. Gateway to the community should be a beautiful building, should be extensively landscaped. Maintain fifty-foot setback to the fronts. And no comments were received during the thirty-day written comment period. Items to be submitted for the site plan is a full site plan application, site plan engineering, elevations, landscaping, and lighting information. A stormwater pollution prevention plan to the town engineer. So, the site is currently approved, the building formerly used as a restaurant diner and due to its location at the intersection of twenty-four and Montauk Highway is considered the gateway to the hamlet of Hampton Bay. The site is immediately located next to the hamlet of Hampton Bay's identification sign. It is a type-one action, secret needs to be completed prior to deeming the site plan complete. Appearance of the building, the front elevation north is incorrectly labeled as a rear elevation, has no features presenting to the front of the property. So, I'm just considered, when I was looking at this, this is.
Sign is straddling.
This one does face the road. And it doesn't seem to have any features that break it up or anything, it's a, it's like a wall. So, I just make the comment that it should present to the road too. You're seeing that this is the thing, and it will be visible from that road, but both sides should have some presentation to the road in terms of like either doorways or window features or something to that fact. So, but otherwise, I think you'd like the materials being used. Yes, exactly, so. So, you know, maybe a recommendation to meet with the ARB ahead of time before formal application. So, the site is flagged as requiring a referral to landmarks. I looked it up, I think it was in the fifties, maybe in the forties, that the build, the original building, which has been redone several times, was built, so. So the original site plan had two buildings, one eight thousand and fifty-eight square feet and the rear building at eighty-eight-ten. That would have put it above the fifteen thousand that's permitted, so they've reduced their plan to about six thousand to the rear building. But I think they're even going down to fifty-nine and change.
Fifty-nine, fifty.
Yeah, exactly, so, so I just want to point that out. So. So this is part, we've had a lot of discussion back and forth, part of the parking is adjacent to the building on the west side. Whether you'd want to orientate the buildings more in front, but the access is a problem here. So, I'm not quite sure how you want to make a comment that they should put the buildings in the front and the parking in the rear.
What is that, is it a drainage, what is that thing that comes down? It's a drainage easement.
It's a state drainage easement to the sum.
Right, and that pushes everything over.
Yeah, that's what's really driving the parking being along that side.
So they can't put a building in that area, just parking?
Yeah, because of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna say that, do the drainage easement, the parking has to be oriented.
Yeah, I mean, the drainage easement has dictated the entire site, actually, right?
It's very common. Come up another site plan.
Uh, but there's no problem like heavily screening that parking in that area, so that's, shall I recommend that?
Landscape, you know, every, every, what is it, Claire, ten spaces, twenty spaces? We should have a tree, some grass. I mean, it also creates some shade, which is good for parking areas.
So, compliance with three-thirty, I think that's ninety-nine J, which requires the internal landscaping.
Yeah.
That would be the next one, seven. So they're showing the proposed cross-access to the east. Should we show future cross-access to the west?
Which more is, in the bottom left corner is cross-access.
Is it showed on?
Yeah, it's like a dashed line.
Okay.
Between the two islands?
I'm looking for that.
Three to four spots up.
Right between the two islands.
Take your pen to the left. To the left, to your left. Right there, that's it, right there.
Right here.
Yeah, see those dashed lines, that would be the proposed future cross-access.
Okay.
Does that town easement run behind this property? The canoe place extension, even though it's not currently on the table.
It's down here and you'd have to go through the.
State property.
The state, so.
To recharge?
Oh, so it doesn't extend as far.
So we have it to this.
You'd have to go up, you're supposed to go up that property line and come through.
Run all the way through that canoe, uh, good ground road, road extension.
Right, and then the problem is the state sum. Is how you get through the state sum.
Right.
Why do they have that there?
Way back when. Yeah.
That's why the easement's.
I'm glad you mentioned that.
Lot of repurposed surfaces.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Dennis, because it is a bit of a concern to me that I think approval of this plan effectively kills any possibility of making that, that alternate road into the hamlet.
Well, not if we establish a cross-access to the south.
That would allow.
The plan would have to come down.
Through the parking lot.
Go back up, go back up that road, that town property, and then we could left onto this property again.
But you, you had at the, our last work session, you had Janice Share come in and tell you, it's effectively dead, right? So, I don't think that's in the plan in any way, shape, or form. The community came out.
Right, and, and I will say, I think you were the first folks to tell us that you'd been told to go ahead and proceed, which, I'll be honest, is a concern, you know, all due respect to you gentlemen, I think, you know, maybe we should have heard somehow else that.
You guys backed up to the sum there.
Listen, we spent a lot of time with the town, waiting for them to come up with a plan for that. I mean, I think it was two years at least until we got this application in, and we sat around waiting, right? And finally, you know, they saw pity on us and said, it's not gonna happen, go ahead and make your application.
There were two or three variations here, using that property in store, moving the property, swapping it, that never happened, and.
We were pretty patient through that process.
It's an awkward piece, you know.
Time to move.
And then we talked about, if there's a traffic circle there, you're okay with that, you know. In fact, that would help you.
It would.
People can get right out and onto that traffic circle and go east or west or.
Correct.
Out of town.
All right, and that is another idea that's, I think, hopefully gonna be, you know, pursued going forward, yeah.
Your committee.
We did speak to the state and they said they have absolutely no plans for a traffic circle.
But we can accommodate.
But we can accommodate if it ever happened, yeah, we were trying to confirm with them and they said, no, it's not on the books for now.
Well, plans, plans have been developed, whether, whether they.
Is that right?
Again, we'll have to have some.
Yeah, we had some plans.
They wrote something out that didn't affect our property.
Right, yeah, we had that, yeah.
Janiski.
Yeah, which we overlaid. Yeah, which, like you said, works great with our.
Perfect for you.
With us, yeah.
And I, the comment I made was not a reflection on you folks.
No.
At all, okay.
So Claire, what are you talking about architecturally, that it's the building that's angled, the front building?
Yeah, do you have the elevations with you? I'm sorry, did I bring?
You have a rendering or an elevation?
Yeah, I have them.
Probably the big.
The north facade, actually, they're facing the road, no, the other way, along the road. This side here.
This one, yeah.
Just very little, I mean, just see that.
We didn't render the elevation.
This is the front you're looking at in this river, it's a, there's nothing here, it's just like a blank hole.
Oh, there's no parking there now.
Huh?
There's no parking there now.
There's no parking, I'm just saying it's, it's a blank wall and it's facing the street.
It's not blank, it actually has three different materials.
Whoa, yeah.
It's also a fifty-foot buffer there.
Yeah, but we want you to be able to look.
Of course, as do we. We have no problem enhancing that elevation.
Yeah, there's some breaking, and that's why I think with.
Yeah, it's this, not that.
No, it's not, but that actually is interesting. That's not a either. No, it's not, it's not on some of these things, it wasn't refined. I think you got the point, right?
We don't have.
And so work with the ARB and then come back and we'll look at it through the process.
Where are you on the list, Claire?
I think we're up to traffic, a traffic study will be required. The count shall include summer and morning and afternoon commutes in the spring and fall, fourth fall.
Can we talk about that? Doing those counts is, is a challenge and I think we have a better protocol to do it, and I'll ask Matt to explain it to you. But I think we have, we have historic data from last summer.
Correct, the state has data from twenty-four as well as Montauk Highway that we'd like to utilize as those summer counts in the interest of saving time. Twenty twenty-three, they did, they did Montauk Highway in July and they did twenty-four in August.
That's a relevant, that's a relevant, August, there's no traffic. There's no traffic in August. I said there. It aug, it, in August for the commutes is, there's no traffic coming into the south.
But as far as counts.
But counts?
They're saying they have the state counts for August and what was the other?
We have July and August for the state, for the maneuvers through south and north on twenty-four, as well as east and west on Montauk Highway.
Okay.
You want to use that data in lieu of us doing, you know, physical counts.
But, one road was in July and one road was, one road was in August?
Correct.
And Claire is saying August is not appro, is not a good month to pick.
Yeah, I mean, it's just gridlock starting April to.
So what months?
But that's a, isn't that the worst-case scenario, conservative?
Well, it's interesting because what happens is that the, those road traffic count things don't get triggered when the.
Well, there's too much congestion.
When you're at a standstill, it's not registering on the road monitor. I might be not using the technical terms.
Well, I, I think you're on to something, we've talked about it at other locations, where the traffic is so heavy that the, you know, you're not showing any traffic flow because they're bumper to bumper.
No, but it's, 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 it registers, it's, it's a traffic counter. It's not like the, the loop detection that we're thinking with like signals and things like that, where, yeah, I would agree with you.
It's not free-flowing, but again, we're, we're getting, we're getting a little caught up. My thought here would be, if it's appropriate, and I imagine it's appropriate, is that we have someone evaluate your suggestion. I mean, I'm not saying I'm opposed to that suggestion, and I think if there's existing data.
Yeah, have your.
You know, we don't want to reinvent the wheel.
Have your traffic guy, if he'll confirm and feel the state, the state counts are valid, then sure, why?
The only thing I would suggest is if you did, if it's July and August data, because Claire's right, traffic is very congested in July and August, I would say maybe one of the other seasons, spring or fall perhaps, to, you know, more of a free-flowing.
Spring, we have, we have probably counting spring, correct.
The point is that if you have gridlocked traffic that's barely moving, you don't get a lot of vehicles.
Get the count.
You don't get a counted number of vehicles per hour.
But it's the worst case.
Right.
Well, it's not the worst case. The worst case is spring and fall with the schools being open and people trying to get to Southampton.
Right, but the way, the way the state counts is, and maybe I'm just belaboring this, but it, it puts the cables across the road and counts the tire traffic that passes over it, so whether the car is sitting there or not, it's still counting each wheel.
Right.
But during the period of time they do it, yeah.
I think we're okay with the summer counts, which is the state.
Right.
And then just doing counts in the spring would be fine, don't you think?
Spring or fall?
Spring or fall, either one.
And we know from, again, previous studies and, you know, my previous and you folks have probably seen this too. You know, May and October are very similar, you know, so, or April, May, you know, September, late September and October are gonna be very similar. So, as Claire said, I think we use the high-season stuff and use one of the shoulder season, you know. Maybe not, you don't have to, I don't think you have to.
No, no, spring's fine.
Okay.
So state numbers for the summer and then they're doing counts for the spring.
And we'll have a traffic consultant look at those numbers.
Who is the traffic consultant?
I think we have to.
We'll have to hire them.
Okay.
You guys, you guys have one.
We, we'll do our own traffic study.
Yeah.
But we have to have somebody look at it.
Yeah, we just hire our people, over here.
So the access, there's gonna be two access points, so that should be reviewed by obviously the DOT and DW, as they both have jurisdiction. This stormwater pollution prevention plan reviewed by the town engineer. Sustainability, this is your typical statement, though it includes recommendations for solar and other measures, including charging stations.
Charging stations, yeah. That's gonna be the codes.
And then landscaping, so there's existing trees along the eastern lot line should be surveyed, preserved, and incorporated into the proposed landscape plan. Add street trees along Montauk Highway additionally in the industry. Of climate resiliency, the use of drought-tolerant native plant species needs to be favored over the installation of ornamental vegetation, which require increased irrigation, fertilizer, fertilizer, and other maintenance. So that's my recommendation on that.
Eric, could we focus for a moment on the existing Hampton Bay's welcome sign that's straddling the lot line up by the road?
Is it up the lot line?
It's showing on the map.
Oh, it is, okay.
It's straddling. It's, I always thought it may be appropriate there to, to establish some sort of what I would call Hampton Bay's welcoming node. Be something maybe just a little more formal. It could involve a planting, certainly the sign, welcome to Hampton Bay's, but maybe honoring first responders or something like that. I would leave it to the Hampton Bay Civic Association to, just a small note, you know what I'm talking about?
Delineation, really.
Right, a small node with maybe some formal plant, it could be in the possibly semicircle or, right, a little stone, small stone ball of that nature. That, that would be a great location for something like that, good visibility, it's there already, you have the sign there, it's got me moved in. But just to carve out a little community welcome node, that would be the spot.
On, on their property.
Yeah, on their property.
Hampton Bay's beautification.
And it could be maintained by the civic as a beautification community.
Right, they already manage the, they manage the plantings in the median.
They maintain the median, yeah. So, maybe carve out a little.
That's a nice, nice idea.
That's a good idea. I don't know if they have to.
I don't see any pushback from the applicants.
Yeah. What choice do we have?
Susan Von Freddy may be able to persuade.
We haven't done the impact saving yet, right?
I think she has.
I can feel the enthusiasm.
Nothing, nothing to, you know.
Okay, fourteen buffers, are you up to buffers?
That kind of falls into the buffer.
Okay, I actually kind of folded into number one because I mentioned the sign, but it's, yeah. So, the, they're maintaining the buffers in the fronts and it's not adjacent to any residential zone properties. The sanitary system is proposed to be an IA system and should meet the health department's requirements and then refu, referrals to be made pursuant to the site plan requirements. And due to the scope of the project as well as the need for cross-access, a public hearing shall be held.
Claire, did you add on parking, the landscaping?
Islands, yes. So you want to do it with those changes, so.
Just.
Go ahead.
One, one point, at our last, I guess we had a work session as opposed to the public hearing. Dennis suggested or requested that we take the building down. That's really an anathema to a land use lawyer who, you know, you lose your rights when you take it down. But we considered it and the challenge is you have a year from the time you take it down to put a foundation in to vest your rights. So, the quicker we can move this, the closer we can get to it. And, and one of the things that I thought about yesterday and I talked to council was coming up with some sort of reservation of vested rights agreement, where the town would say that, that we have the rights that exist with the current building. It gets taken down and, and at least I feel comfortable that I haven't given up some right that may come back to bite us in the future. So I think you, council and I can put together some sort of agreement. Christine suggests I go to the town board with it, which is a good idea, but I'd ask you today. idea, but I'd ask you today that you would say that you would be in favor of some sort of reservation rights.
Would you be ready to go as soon as it's torn down?
Well, we have to go, we have to go through the.
You have a lot of stuff to get together.
Demolition permit.
A lot of processes unfolding. We could take that ugly eyesore off the Hampton Bays.
That's why I wanted to go to the town board to get what they feel would be the moiser path.
They wanted you to stay up until you're ready to build.
Certainly we can work it out.
Really? I know every resident Hampton Bays wanted that thing down for the last ten years.
And there were some people who said, you know, it's landmark status. So, yes, we have public hearing.
Yeah.
Yes, we did. This.
It's not, it's not landmark.
No, it's not.
But that doesn't mean people.
Well, it's been drastically renovated, so it would kick it out of landmark status.
It's a two-year rating, eyesore. It's been embarrassing Hampton Bays for the last twelve years. You come off the highway and there it is.
Yep.
So the sooner you can get it down, you have a lot of public support.
So Christine, you think that town board, a town board?
I would like for them to opine on it and certainly if the community is supportive of it, they'll have their pulse on that and agree that that's the greatest idea.
Yeah, there'd have to be a public hearing.
Not a public hearing, but.
The work session we talked about, but as long as we have your approval, that's what we need now, and then we'll work through the process as council lays out.
I'd love to see that building.
Well, I wouldn't like to see it's just a construction lot with nothing happening.
Oh, no, they're part of the resolution. They would have to grade it, seed it, you know, do just temporary landscape thing, you know, so you're not looking at a dirt, you know, pile of dirt.
Have people been breaking into the building?
Yes.
We'd be happy to if we could maintain our rights, be happy to take it down and make it look nice, yeah.
Or they should be protected.
Make it look nicer. I don't know that it would be nice until the buildings are.
Be very welcoming to Hampton Bays community, I tell you.
Okay, so any other comments?
Can we get, so everybody's okay with pursuing this option of divested rights?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I think you have to have those, right?
Yeah.
Sure.
But as long as the board's comfortable.
Once it's settled, we'll do a resolution with them authorizing, you know, be able to sign in or the supervisor, whoever, to sign an agreement with you.
And as part of that resolution, I tell you, what we want to see there is just temporary, just seeding, you know, nothing.
Right, as long as it's restored in some way.
Yeah, just like the lawn.
Can't be a liability.
Right, right.
Agreed.
Okay.
All right.
Are we adopting this or?
I support adopting the pre-submission conference report. The changes would be to establish some kind of welcome node related to that sign in the front. And then it would be also that due to drain adjustments, um, the parking has to, is designed the way it is on the west side. There'll be some landscaping of the parking on the west. Three thirty ninety-nine J, which is the interior landscaping. Um, there is cross-access shown on the west side.
Architectural interest on the north.
Yes, I already have that as in the report before. The count shall, in the summer, shall be the state numbers and those should be spring actual counts.
Delineation of the, of the charging stations.
Reviewed by our traffic consultant.
Um, right. Traffic consultant review and then, yep, the charging stations.
Yeah, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
At once.
So there's a lot of changes, but you're comfortable with the changes? Is everybody comfortable with the changes?
Nothing major, nothing major.
Claire, you'll give us a remand?
Oh, yeah, I'm going to do that this, next week, but I'll adopt it if you're good for that.
Okay.
Great.
Motion to adopt, agreed, second by Gloria, all in favor, one absent.
We're coming back. We're moving forward. Yeah, it looks like a great project.
Thank you.
It's a lot of good work.
Thank you.
So my next one is.
Is that your folder?
No.
No, that's ours.
That's yours, please?
Nice.
Puccio?
Yes, Puccio is an extension of the action deadline until April twenty-fifth.
Motion?
Extension to April twenty-fifth. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor, opposed, extensions, six in favor, one absent.
What number is Puccio?
Six.
Six.
Or seven.
Seven.
Seven on the new version.
We were told it was taken off.
Yeah. Now, number eight is off.
Yep.
Number eight, Bud Hampton is off.
No, Bud Hampton's on.
Eight is Jose Ojo.
Oh, sorry.
So which is off?
You know, we all, Jose, Jose is off.
They all have different numbers because of the change.
Jose is off. And number twenty, Eastport Bible Church is off.
Number nineteen on my agenda.
Right, I know. Well, I'm using the new agenda, yeah. And Cap is off, number twenty-one, and Pad is off, number twenty-two, but there are some additions. Okay.
Okay.
Anthony, you're Bud Hampton.
Yeah.
Wait, did you put two, two five and two fifty-one in? Did you include that?
That's the walk on. And it's going to be just the schedule.
Okay. You want to do it anywhere in here?
Yeah, as soon as I'm done with my couple of things. I just, new reports coming down. Everyone knows the project, Bud Hampton. We've discussed it.
Hi, Carl, how are you?
Um, we went through the report last time, identified, you know, all the issues. There were just some minor, um, minor changes to the report, but if you look at number two, I have the copies. Oh.
I think you guys have.
Two more, I think.
No problem.
You want, here, you can enter.
We need one more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh.
I got it, I got it.
You're good?
Um, so then real quick here, um, in the second of the comments, if you look at the third pattern or if I edit, additional issues the planning board identified include, correct, you mentioned timed parking, George mentioned accident reports for this section of highway, and new trip generation data for this specific site. Um, the only other thing I'm going to recommend in here in number two, the one thing that we spoke about, a little warm on it, was this concept of getting everybody from this site out to the light. Whether we would do that as a matter of a future cross-access or implement it now, if the discussions with the applicant and with Janice, we're going to implement as part of this application. How that gets designed, the nature of the improvements will work out, you know, with engineering. But even Carl's got a little sketch there to show the board that in fact they will bring everybody out to the light.
So this is cross-access on the other piece of property that.
Correct.
That's correct. It's actually, it's two different properties.
Two, yeah.
Okay.
Carl Benacasa, eight sixty Montauk Highway for the applicant, yeah.
So that's the, that's the only thing I'm going to add then to this report in item number two, is that the plan should, um, account for, um, access to the light for this project. I think that would be my only other.
This would actually be constructed?
It would be constructed as part of this application.
There would be no egress from the site itself. It'd be strictly to the light.
And this.
So you'd have ingress to the lot, ingress from the light, and egress to the light.
I wasn't.
Terminally limited.
This would not be there?
Yeah, no, it'll solve a lot of traffic problems.
And is, is the bus shelter tucked in right next to that little access road? Is that, that little box I see?
Before, Tom.
And we're considering.
It's going to be right here.
I heard, there's new names on the table.
Oh, good.
It's the little things that make me happy, Carl.
Bridgehampton Green was one of them, but nothing's been decided, but that's one of them.
Leaves.
What'd you say?
Leaves.
Yeah, Hampton Leaves.
And architecturally, do you have any architectural renderings?
We do have some. I don't think they've been formally submitted yet.
No, not yet. If you're showing.
But.
Existing buildings, your plant, but.
I mean, they're basic now, and you'll certainly, these will be worked upon. But you can see it's, there's white panel siding. The windows are not the full length anymore.
Mm-hmm.
This has the old name on it. We hadn't changed it yet.
Right.
But.
Flat roof, paint roof, right?
You could have a contest for.
No, we're not going to.
For the, for the record, they do have a schedule setting them to the ARB.
Yeah, we are going to be.
Do you want an entry door facing Montauk Highway? Yeah, yeah.
You know, it should look like a coffee shop, a little, you know, when it's done.
What's happening with the sidewalk along there?
Um, you know.
That's a state.
Yeah, my guess is when they come in and we do the referral for this application, they're going to have requirements as part of this, but.
And then we're going to, we plan to, we'll have a full landscape plan, but as you can see, the concept is to print it or hedge the entire.
Let me, Carl, take a look at this. The concept is please tell the applicant, don't be stingy with the landscaping.
Yeah.
It's beautifully landscaped.
Isn't it?
If you like asphalt trees.
Early American asphalt.
So this would be now submitted to the state for their review of this?
It'll be referred to as part of the application, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And this has been engineered out that it comes in right next to the shelter?
Are you looking at the plan they gave us? That's just a concept. I wouldn't spend too much time on that. That's just, they were demonstrating that they're willing.
That's us demonstrating, aren't we?
Bring it out to the light. That's not a design yet.
Okay, because I think in previous discussions, we said the shelter would have to be moved, which I just was curious about.
I don't think, where is the bus shelter?
It's awfully close to that cross. Right there.
Yeah, yeah. It would probably have to be relocated.
It says relocated bus shelter on the map.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can put it in Bridgehampton. We don't have one.
State don't have to look at.
No, but you need it there. That's a very popular, that's a popular for the employees who come. As his comments, yeah.
But with that additional, you know, statement about the implementation of the access to the light, I think that would be my only other change.
That's major.
Yeah. I'm going to put that in there, and that would be my final change.
So just to clarify, the state regs that have changed somewhat, is the condition still that an applicant needs to have a site plan application in before he can get a license? That was the chicken and the egg situation. I just wanted to clarify whether the state had changed that.
I don't believe that.
You can't get a license until you have.
No, I mean, the state's licensing requirements, they issued like preliminary licenses and then.
To people who have been convicted of marijuana offenses.
Right, right.
Ultimately, they're going to give the final licenses out upon basically completion of this process, is my guess.
That's what I'm asking you.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that, you know, it'll be a condition of the approval, of course, but they're going to have to get to a certain point, and the state's got to be comfortable that they have the site and ready to go.
Because I had asked, why do we go through all of this if you don't have a license? And then I was told it's a sort of a chicken and egg thing. The state has to see that you have an active application, if not approved, before they give you the license.
That's right. Yep, that's absolutely.
And under the town's regs.
The state law says you have to have control of the property.
Control of the property, okay. That's an interesting word, isn't it?
So like a signed lease in theory would be sufficient, however, you know, who's going to sign a lease if there's no guarantee that the state can get through the site process?
Right, good. Thanks, Teresa.
And the town regs say, it just conditioned CO on the license. The license is required for the CO, but everything else up until then, including permits.
Right.
You don't.
Okay, so you'll do an ARB.
Yeah, they're already scheduled, so.
And you have color rendering. You'll have color rendering.
That'll all come, yeah, sure. I, they exist. I just don't have them with me today.
Yeah, okay. So what else are we doing here?
Just adding that one statement, so I'd recommend adopting the pre-app. I mean, the pre-submission conference.
Yeah.
You're recommending we adopt it?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you want copies of these?
Submitting to us, okay.
Any other questions on this? Nope.
No, not at the moment.
Not at the moment. Okay, motion to adopt the pre-app report.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second by Dennis, all in favor, opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent.
Kevin, is Keith Brown on there?
So we're moving to number ten, Nine O'Leary and Flanders LLC.
So at our last discussion, the board might recall, AKRF is assisting with the review.
Yes.
There was some, you know, they've expended the budget. There was some additional information that they requested. A lot of it had to do with some of the DOT data, the pass-by information, whether the DOT, you know, acknowledges or agrees with the information. We had a discussion last time. We agreed that we would ask our consultant for an updated proposal for the additional scope of services to bring this, you know, review to a conclusion. I got that proposal yesterday, I mean, this morning when I got in. I forwarded it to the board. I should, actually, I should say prior to doing that, the applicant did submit additional information as pertains to the DOT. I forwarded it to the, to the board. I did forward it to AKRF, and then they came up with this proposal to do the additional work with the four meetings, and it was, you know, an escrow, additional escrow of $10,000. I spoke with the applicant today, and they, you know, sent an email. They understood and agreed that the, you know, AKRF would need to do information to bring this to conclusion, but they raised a question about, you know, the amount. And I think Keith wants to address the board, which obviously, let's hear what he has to say, maybe, you know, I could go back to AKRF with some more specifics to try to get a more detailed type of proposal. But let's hear what the applicant has to say and the board at that point.
Members of the board, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Give us your full name, Keith. Give us your full name.
I'm Keith Brown, Brownland, Philly, LP. I'm driving right now, so I apologize.
Can you pull over?
Can you? Please pull over.
I think that Mr. Treza said is accurate. We just questioned the fact that, you know, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel and the amount of the escrow that was asked by AKRF. So we actually sent an email to the consultant at AKRF. We CC Anthony Treza on that email, and we asked him to reduce to $3,000. You know, this project has been going along for quite some time. We got the answer finally that we were looking for from the DOT. We included some additional information about other projects and the pass-by rate that was utilized by, found plenty more on those projects. So at this point, there is no more additional information. It's just a matter of, you know, just summarizing it to the board in a memo, and then, you know, we can get to the determination on this project.
Have you heard, you haven't heard back from AKRF?
No, but we just thought that the $10,000, you know, they only asked for $10,000, you know, as a matter of course. We just thought that that was excessive considering not work that, that's warranted here for just to.
I mean, I guess my.
They asked for it to be reduced to $3,000.
My comment, my only comment is that they talked about four meetings. It seemed like that, from my perspective, and I don't understand everything that was in that letter, that they seem to think there's a lot more work that they needed to do.
Yeah.
Including onsite work at the, at the proposed.
Yeah, I don't disagree. Gloria, what I hadn't been able to do, and I spoke to Keith today about this, and I hadn't been able to speak to Matthew subsequent to all this, which is who I really need to speak to, so I could sort of grasp a little bit. So I'm not sure, you know, I wouldn't recommend that the planning board today agree to a contract to $10,000 until I speak to AKRF a little bit and see if I could, you know, you know, because I also don't know that, you know, that they've looked at in complete detail the significant information that came in relating to the DOT, you know, so I just don't know at this point, you know.
And I.
Well, just on that note, could I just mention that the information with the DOT was simply that they agreed with the pass-by rates that were utilized by our consultant, some field engineering, in putting together the traffic impact study.
Gotcha.
So that was the information that they needed to confirm power numbers. So therefore, you know, they're, they're just, in all honesty, there is nothing really more that needs to be done. And we asked in our last letter if there was anything specific that was needed, and we have not gotten a response.
Okay.
So what did they start out quoting us at?
What was that? What was that?
What did they start out quoting us at?
If I remember correctly, the, we were looking at roughly 7,000 was paid towards this traffic review so far.
Already.
Yes.
And that included how many meetings?
It was supposed to be up to four, but, but monies had to be moved to, from meetings to technical review because of some back and forth that happened.
All right, so they got seven already, and then this is calling for two internal reviews and one site visit more.
And four meetings, yeah.
It doesn't say four meetings in there, another four.
It does.
It does, yeah.
It does, it doesn't say that.
So maybe that can be.
I don't know if they need another four meetings.
Yes.
What time?
What I would suggest is perhaps something that, with a not to exceed amount, to be determined, perhaps after some more discussions with Matthew, and, you know, with a breakdown of the hours as to what tasks they, they undertake and accomplish as part of that, so maybe a not to exceed amount rather than a flat amount. And I've also offered perhaps to be, you know, in on the conversation with Matthew about this to try to, you know, again, meet a, a good middle point for everybody.
So that's what we've come up with, Matthew. I mean, Keith.
Okay, and, and that sounds fair. We, as you know, we are, we want to move the project along, so we're okay with an not to exceed number.
All right, so I'm going to, like I said, it's been happening over the course of days, we'll, we'll come back, we'll put it back on, and I will have something more detailed, and for Matt for next time. Does that work?
Yep.
It, it does, but if, for some reason there is something else, you know, we really, you know, want to have specifics so that we can get that information as quickly as possible to the board.
I, I agree with that, Keith, so.
We'll do the best we can, Keith. Please drive safely.
Yes.
Thank you.
Signal and changing lanes.
Okay.
I am going to suggest. I am going to suggest that perhaps we have a policy that we don't take Zoom calls from people that are driving.
Yep, I agree. I agree with you. Can we do that?
I think we could post that, or whatever it could be.
I'm sure there's no law on that, sure.
But it's a policy, I agree with you.
Right, right. If you look at, you know.
You'd be surprised what people call doing.
If you look at safety statistics, and I just completed a safety course, whether you're holding the phone or not holding the phone.
You're distracted.
You have a much higher accident rate.
Yep.
Applicants are.
People are called with wine in their hand. I went to a Zoom call with somebody that was drunk.
Not while driving, by the way.
Not while driving, no, 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 no.
To be very honest, I'm mostly concerned about the other drivers on the road.
Zooming and drinking at the same.
If, if the person wants to injure themselves, that's fine, but they're taking other people's lives at risk.
The only other one.
Exactly, I've seen these meetings.
Um, you went through everything, so the, I'll just do my one walk-on, Jackie, then next. There's no action on this one.
Yes, the walk-on is.
This is for the site plan special exception application of 225 and 251 Butter Lane, to schedule the hearing for April 25th, 2024.
This is the Alpaca form?
No, 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 this is the Farrell Mini Storage, just for the board's record, I verbally said last time, this is going to be for the subdivision application and for the site plan special exception application, but it didn't get noticed in the paper like that.
Uh, that's Carl's application.
It's Carl, so we're gonna have to have the hearing scheduled, and then have the site plan the next, the next meeting. That's just the way it's gonna have to be.
We didn't schedule it properly.
I, it, it was a mistake on my part. I just did it verbally and didn't follow through the right way. Sorry, Carl.
Anyone, but anyone would you have?
I know.
So we are.
Schedule them for 225, 251 Butter Lane for April 25th.
For the site plan?
For the site plan special exception.
Is that on here?
Site plan.
No, that's a walk.
April, it's a walk-on, April 26th. Okay, motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor of proposed extensions, six in favor, one absent. Thank you, Anthony.
See you later on.
You're on tonight.
Yeah.
Teresa, are you going to Charos, is it?
Yes, so as you may recall, we had a pre-submission conference for the Charos application here in Watermill, it's the diner location. The applicant had requested that I speak, or that they'd get an opportunity to speak to you, even though we adopted a pre-submission conference report on October 12th, because they would like you to waive the spring traffic count or fall traffic count requirements.
We just went through this, you know, this is not something I think we're gonna waive, not in these locations.
Well.
We have, it's critical information. I mean, there's an area where we've had accident counts there, and it's for your benefit as well as, as the planning boards. So I would certainly not recommend it. Tom, how do you feel? You're a traffic expert.
You know, I, well, certainly I think that three years' worth of accident data is important. It's already been. That's always part of any traffic count, any.
So what's different here is we, we have a study done. That study was provided to the board, and it includes the multi-year accident data. It makes, it indicates that no remedial actions necessary for the site, given the amount of cross, cross-access already built into the development of this area. It indicates that, I know the concern was left-hand turns, left-hand turns coming out of it, left-hand turns going into the site. There have been no left-hand turn accidents. The information's clear. These studies are expensive, you know, upwards of 25,000. The cost would be the same to do it over in the, in the spring, so they are burdensome to the applicant.
Tell us when it was done.
This was done in August. This was done in August.
Have we?
For.
For what application? For what?
Oh, this is for the Charos, the medical building behind the diner.
This is the diner, and then they're putting medical offices here in the rear of the lot.
So give us a baseline of what was.
And we've seen this?
Yes, we adopted a pre-apply.
You've seen, you did adopted a pre-application report.
Pre-submission conference report. They initially looked for a 8,000 square foot, one-story building and associated parking in addition to the restaurant use, reconfiguration of the parking. The pre-submission conference report said, okay, maybe look at making the building two stories so you have more flexibility in parking, but they also said that we are acknowledging that this is not a summer community anymore, and that we need traffic counts either in the fall or in the spring.
So this study that was done was for the di, the building in the front?
Was, no, it included the, it included the, the medical offices.
When was it done?
But again.
August.
The timing, dear?
Of '23.
It was the, it was the timing, we, we felt that, you know, August, people take vacation, right? There's no schools, there's no buses, there's, you know, the traffic is considerably less in August than it is in March. It turns, like daylight savings is the day that the traffic switches.
This is extemporaneous data. This is the report which indicates what the traffic tolls actually are. It says that it's be above the average of 20,000 a day.
Yes.
The report you're seeing here is comprehensive enough to cover what, what pitfalls may come in spring, especially in light of the cross-access being offered, the fact that no recommendations for remediation were put into this, and that no, no left-hand turn accidents have occurred in multi-year data. It's quite a burdens, burden to put on applicants to do this twice a year, both in terms of cost and in terms of delay, because inherently, there's a six-month delay.
I think.
But, you know.
So the question is, can you rely on a report that was done in August?
Big question. I mean, that's the question, because I think what we're experiencing now is August being sort of an aberration, because there's so much traffic, you really don't get an accurate count. We just, you heard the conversation?
I did.
That we have?
This was, but an onsite count done by them.
So then we should be looking at a July count, or a spring, or a fall, one or the other. We're not asking for both.
I, you know, when this subject came up, I, I did a quick, quick call to Takahoe School District, which is the smallest school district we have in Southampton Town, right? They have 96 full-time employees, not including their busing, because they contract their busing with Montauk Bus in Hampton Bays, so they go directly from the Bus Depot in Hampton Bays to the routes. But they have 96 full-time employees that service one elementary school. So to igno, to, to say, well, there's not an increase in traffic in, in, you know, in the spring, when there are buses that stop every 10 feet on the highway, and there are school teachers, and there are some administrative support staff, and there's custodial staff, and security staff, and paraprofessionals, I think it's, it's really disingenuous to say that August is the best, you know, the most highest traffic counts, uh, uh, in, that we're going to experience during the summer, right? That we're gonna experience year-round.
In all fairness, we used to push for, we used to push for the summer.
I, I.
In all fairness, but you're right, it's spring and fall.
And there are, there are differences a little bit in the season, as, as, you know, you're pointing out, Teresa, and I used to look at this stuff. Once you get into July and August, your 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM traffic declines.
Right.
Eastbound, because your teachers and administrators are not coming out.
Right.
Later in the day, it increases, because you've got more of the, you know, uh, delivery people, trade parade, and you've got, you know, visitors and whatever coming out. So there are some qualitative differences when you look at spring, summer, and fall, and I think we talked about this, you know, in my opinion, probably if we did a, a, a good spring count or a good fall count, that gives you kind of the shoulder season. I don't know that we necessarily need to do both anymore or all the time.
Just one or the other, because they're similar, right?
Right, they're similar.
The other.
Anecdotally, right, last spring, it took me about an hour and 15 minutes to come from my house in Flanders to Town Hall. In the summer, it took me about 40 minutes, because there are traffic calming issues, there are no schools, there are people taking vacations, so, you know, anecdotally, traffic is.
Well, that's based on the time you travel.
Carl, if you, if you were to do.
Well, we just say.
A fall, say a fall, that's spring, because spring is here unless you wanted to do it. I don't know what that, what an estimate of cost would be. I know you don't want to spend any more money, et cetera, but I don't know that just an August study, traffic study, that's now a year old, it's relatively new.
It accounts for, what's the percentage increase per year? It does account for.
It's the projected.
Point, one point, it's about a 2% increase per year.
I would say 2 and 1/4% is what's always been.
So it accounts for that.
So if it's 20,000 a day, at 2 and 1/2%, that's what, another 4,000 cars?
No, no, 400.
100, 100.
The DOT has a 24/7 traffic counter.
Could we supplement this report?
Out at the Peconic Bridge, the overpass.
Maybe we can supplement it.
Would you be okay if we supplement it with existing DOT information?
They may, I think they might have a 24/7 counter in Watermill. I'm not 100% certain of that, but I know they had one at the Peconic Bridge, you know, which gets the Sunrise Highway traffic. Now, you lose some people because they get off at, at 66, or get on at 66, but, you know, whenever I used to do this kind of stuff, I was assuming probably 95% of that, you know, number was people that, you know, getting off are on Sunrise Highway and onto 39, and, you know, then going, you know, east.
Yeah, it, just that, you know, we undertook this at great expense in August because we thought that's when.
Right.
We would show the highest density, and.
Yeah.
There's kind of been a shift in understanding in the board.
Well, there's a shift in traffic, really, and so it really behooves us, we're trying to get a handle on traffic. I mean, every application that comes in, no traffic impact, no traffic impact.
And none of us can get anywhere anymore.
And we live here, you know, it's affecting everything, it's infecting employment in, in municipalities, people, towns can't hire people because no one wants to come from the west. I don't have to go through it, you know it. So there is a shift in the flow in, in traffic patterns right now, and we're seeing it. We're seeing much more traffic in the fall and more in the spring. So our focus that used to be on the summer, well, July is still legit, but August, not. So maybe just a supplemental, maybe some kind of an amendment to this?
Yeah, if, you, I guess, you obviously have a traffic engineer that did this.
Yeah, we had Nelson and Pope do it.
Nelson and Pope. I would ask them.
To engage them even supplementally is gonna be.
I mean, I believe, I believe the report said an update.
You can go on the DOT website, although I'm not sure you'll be able to dig deep enough to do it.
Sure, I'm happy to do that.
As I said, there, you know, the Peconic Bridge overpass has a 24/7 counter. That data is publicly available, you have to dig really deep to find it. But if we could find out at least if there is a traffic counter in Watermill, was my understanding, but I could be wrong about that, and I would take, you know, if, if there was a 24/7 traffic counter in Watermill, I'd take the DOT data from Watermill for, you know, April and, you know, it's an Excel spreadsheet, you know, you just print the data.
So look at.
But if there isn't, is it really, is it the, and I'm saying, do you think that August numbers would be so off as to not fairly indicate general traffic matters?
Also bear in mind, our, our board has looked upon medical office uses more of a benign use regarding traffic, and you have the addition, you have a rear.
Yeah.
You, you have access to a signalized intersection. I don't know that, you know, that the traffic is gonna be overwhelming, driving.
I can tell you, this report said no remedial action was necessary.
I would imagine it would.
And it also.
Specials for a bad flying point data, which I know at the last year, he wanted to include.
I mean, I just, I, I think flying point is gonna become the next gridlock.
I mean, the issue, you know.
Because you're pushing at all those office people.
Which is not right.
I, I assume they, they, and I apologize, I don't remember seeing that, and if it's in my emails, I'm gonna find it or ask to get another copy.
I'll make sure you get it.
I'd like to read through it. I'm sure what you're gonna see, I mean, accidents, to me, are always number one. The other thing that I'm sure this will find is that it's gonna cause more of a delay on the Flying Point Road intersection, you know, coming off of Flying Point. I presume, I'm just guessing, but that's probably what's gonna happen there. But I'd like to look at that. If you could maybe ask Nelson and Pope just to check to see if there is a 24/7 counter in Watermill on the DOT website. They can't judge it too much for that. It's, it's not that hard to find if you know what you're doing.
I'll look for it.
Nelson Pope.
Sorry.
But a 24/7 counter in Watermill, you're, you know, it's right down the street.
Sure.
That certainly helps supplement what you found in August, and we could, you know, you can look at, you know, October.
So you wanna keep this conversation open?
Yeah.
I'd like to for two weeks or something, till you maybe make a couple phone calls or do a little research, and I get a chance to look at that. We all get a chance to look at that.
Nelson Pope, you get it. Nelson Pope, you get it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what were some of the other issues that we're looking at?
This is really.
Just, oh, just the traffic.
That's it.
And maybe you can get a copy to Tom, that would be helpful, of that phone book.
Do you want mine?
Yeah, that'd be a little. Email servers can handle.
It's gonna kill my printer to try to print that.
Happy Easter. I'll put a bow on it.
A little chocolate. A little light reading before bed.
I mean, if you, now, I'll take the paper copy.
Only Tom could understand this.
I like, I like reading paper instead of the computer.
I'm happy to do that. If you want it emailed, I'll email it to you, whatever.
But I think for all your, all your applications, and you have many, I think you need to see that the, the traffic patterns are shifting, and we're looking at counts.
And you'd rather them in the fall.
Well, I think certainly a July, a June-July count is important, because that's when it beats up, and then either the spring or the fall, that, Claire, you gave those parameters, what was that? Mid-September to October, I think you said, and. And May to.
Don't forget, you have one item that considerably skews traffic council office, that's the Hampton Classic.
Right.
Last 10 days of this regional festival.
And that was during that period?
Right.
So I mean, that, that lends to, this was the high cap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a medical office.
Who gets impacted by that.
Exactly, it's a medical.
It's a medical.
But Dennis, this whole area.
I know.
Is a nightmare.
As opposed to the Rivian site.
They can't sell those buildings because of traffic.
You're gonna have more traffic in that Rivian.
Barry's Boot Camp, Barry's Boot Camp was supposed to have its own driveway in. I don't know if anybody remembers this.
Yeah.
And then that somehow or another got changed. And we wanted a common driveway from Barry's Boot Camp into the, the back building.
Right.
And that didn't happen. I mean, so that whole, and I remember speaking to the man who owned, uh, he owned Barry's Boot Camp, and then the, um, building on the corner where the Tesla is coming in now, which is a pop-up thing.
Peer one.
I mean, Pier 1. I mean, it was impossible to get people to buy these properties because of the traffic. So it really behooves us to, to really take a hard look. Cross-access has been a blessing, really helped.
We're very fortunate, I mean.
Yes.
Very helpful.
It's everywhere.
Yeah.
Can I make a practical point? Knowing we already have cross-access, and we have a traffic study in front of us, and I understand Teresa's concern, and the planners are uncomfortable, I get uncomfortable. We get new data in.
Yep.
How is that going to adjust our mindset on this application? What, what could we do differently? If we found out it's an extra 60, 70 cars, or whatever the case may be, what are we gonna do with that data? What's actionable?
We might look at, well, there's some recommendation to reduce the size of the building, have less parking, have fewer cars. I mean, all of that feeds into a whole integrated plan.
Change access onto Montauk Highway.
Yeah.
Those are, those are possibilities that could be looked at.
But if that, if that's best practice with additional traffic, why don't we go for it now?
Well, I mean, I did recommend that the, the, the second, one of these eas, uh, accesses be closed in the pre-act report, and you were considering it, and then you didn't feel it was necessary. And I think, I think it just needs to be acknowledged that there is traffic year-round, and, you know, and, and again, if, if it shows a significant increase in the spring or the fall, whether it's appropriate to have an 8,000 square foot medical office, that might, might need to reduce the scale of the project some, you know? I mean, that all feeds into, to how we. You know, I mean, that all feeds into, to how we review these projects.
But if you're gonna do that, you do need something to back it up. You can't just-
You can't just-
Yeah, so we need, we need data, we need data.
We have data, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, but we're saying, we're not sure it's, it's everything.
It's incomplete data.
Yeah.
But based on an assumption, it's incomplete data. Let's just be clear, there's nothing-
No, it's not an assumption. I mean, we know people who live here that the fall and the spring are far worse than August. So, and we just went through a, I mean, we're looking at a traffic study now where the August counts are so skewed because of the traffic monitors. We just had this conversation with the other applicant, where, you know, it tripped, every car trips the count. Well, if cars are just backed up, and you, you're doing your, your traffic study for, say, five hours on a particular day, you're, you're going to get a very skewed count.
But we've always looked at medical offices as a less intensive, um, traffic generator. In fact, there are many applications where sporters got said, oh, my gosh, great, getting rid of this site, we're gonna get medical offices, great, wonderful.
Right. But this is a type-one action. It's a building that's over five thousand square feet. So clearly, there's an impact, right? Whether it's more benign than a restaurant or a car dealership, there's an impact.
No, that doesn't mean there's an impact. It means that you have to undertake SECR.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I think we're going around in circles, so I think you've heard us, and see, see what you can come back.
Okay, so we'll provide you, see if we can get you some more information, Tom.
Get some data.
And then if you're comfortable with that information or plus the extra data, we'll see how the board feels.
And if, you know, if they find that file, they're gonna be able to pull every single month, and they can pull every hour of every single day and every single month. So there's a wealth of data there if, if they can find it. I know they can find it for the Peconic Bridge. I don't know if it's available in Watermill. But you can look, you know, we can look, you know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to you. Maybe you can kind of point me in the right direction, or I'll talk to, to Nelson.
I mean, if the, if the, if the DOT does have supplemental data for, for Watermill, I don't see that that, you know, is, uh, I think that may be sufficient, you know? But we, we need to have the data.
Right.
Yeah. I just wanted to make one comment concerning, uh, the, the two driveways. Originally-
Which, which, which two?
Two driveways into the lobster or the restaurant.
Right.
I know there was talk of closing one off, but those were specifically done in nineteen ninety-seven. There used to be one access in the middle when it was the Holiday Grill in the seventies and eighties.
Yeah.
When we owned it. And it was, it was a disaster. So it, it was either recommended by the state or recommended by the planning board at the time to create that type of egress in and out.
Circulation.
Circulation.
Well, it's for flow circulation, car backup.
But now we have cross-access and other issues.
And that's twenty-five years ago.
Twenty-five years ago is, is a big difference.
But I, you know, we also have to consider the restaurant, and what works, works well for the restaurant is, you know, that type of setup. I don't know how's, I don't know how, closing off one of the accesses could be.
How is that going? Do we know? Do we know how it's working, the two?
They're, they're hanging in there. They, you know, it's a rough business.
She's not talking about the restaurant.
Oh, it's for the traffic, it's, it's fine.
The shortage of shrimp.
At, at the end of the day, DOT is gonna weigh in, right? DOT will weigh in on whether or not a second access, you know, this should be closed off, or, or it should be reconfigured or something of that nature. But I think part of it is we need the data.
So see if you can't get it from what we're recommending.
Just to put this conversation a little bit in perspective, and we all know about that, you know, tragedy with the bridge in Baltimore. And they said how critical it was carrying thirty thousand vehicles a day. County Road Thirty-Nine carries forty thousand vehicles a day. This part carries somewhere in the range of twenty to twenty-five thousand a day, depending on where you are. So, you know, these two roads-
Good point.
Are so critical-
Yeah.
To the east end.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we have to, you know, we have to be as careful as we can be.
And if there's a tragedy, you know what happens? They close the road and, and-
You go nowhere.
You can pitch your tent.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so, thank you for your cooperation.
Thanks, Paul.
Of course.
Thanks, Carl.
Here one more time today on this.
One more?
Yeah, on the, on traffic studies, this is a fun day.
I'll get you a two-sided printer, Carl.
Brenna? Twenty-two fifty-four Tuckahoe Lane.
Yeah.
This is, um, the lot line modification on Tuckahoe Lane, we, we made that at the last- at the last planning board meeting, I think they added some information to the, uh, survey, it was just, um, some minor information, but namely, the, um, the proposed versus the existing lot line, they're transferring forty-two hundred square feet from the, um, applicant slot, which is the one outlined in red, to their neighbor to the south. And apparently something was started, I think in two thousand and three, but that the-
It was approved by the board.
Can you just-
Yes, sorry. Brittany Prim for the applicant.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Brittany Prim for the applicant. Um, this was actually adopted in two thousand and three. It was not the handling attorney on it, however, and the handling attorney, there was conditions that needed to be met in order for it to be approved. Those conditions were never, nothing was ever done with them. So it was voided, so we're here again trying to reopen this, and-
Okay.
Um, the neighbor wanted to widen his driveway, which was the purpose of my client selling him the land, so we're just trying to legalize it and make sure everything is sound. My client wants to sell the property and doesn't wanna pass this down to the next owner, so.
Prim, do you wanna give us a- Yeah, so it's a half-acre, um, lot, the, there will be transferred, they're looking to transfer the forty-two hundred square feet, essentially making them equal-sized lots. Their R-15 zoning, they will remain, obviously, R-15, everything is still, uh, within all the dimensional standards. Nothing's, there's no, I don't think, implications. Um, and I think, uh, yeah, really, that's, that's everything. There's, there's not much more to decide itself in that position itself. The line here, it almost appears like something might have been recorded at some point because the proposed line is on our GIS, but-
Yes.
We just don't have approval with the planning board.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Did you find paperwork on it?
I didn't, I looked. Anything that was available to me through GIS, I couldn't find. Everything D-wise describes the lot as it is now or used to be, according to CDA, uh, GIS.
We also tried to contact the county regarding this, and nothing, there was nothing. So, like I said, it was like this was adopted, the resolution was adopted, and then, like I said, there was, um, certain criteria that needed to be met through the county as well, and it kind of, someone just dropped the ball and kind of just let it go.
And the board's considering completeness, so we can have a hearing.
Okay, so it's complete?
It is complete, um, and the hearing we're, the date we're looking at is April twenty-fifth.
How many do we have, Krista?
We just have two right now.
Is that good, good for you?
That's mine with us, yes.
Motion by Dennis, second by George, all in favor?
Aye.
Repose, abstention, six in favor, one absent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Charlie Smith, number thirteen, one forty-two South River West Hampton.
Yeah, this was a, um, a small, uh, this is two lots in the neighborhood. In West Hampton, we looked, we also looked at, it was incomplete, they, they had to show, uh, water and sanitary on the survey, which they've since included. Um, so the application is complete, because we're gonna look at it a little closer. Kevin, I think, the applicant might be on Zoom, that was, um, Jim or James, who?
What's his name?
Jim Hume.
This is, uh, it's one point one acre, R forty. They're looking to divide, there's a little, um, survey in the packet I just handed out, but they, they're looking to divide it just south of the pool, about twenty feet south of the pool. Uh, it's a two-story existing residence now, with the, uh, sort of a guest house, single-story guest house in the back. A pool, cabana, and, um, outdoor shower, that's, that's everything that's on there right now.
Prina, could you speak up a little bit? I'm having a real hard time hearing you.
Yeah, sure, sorry.
Thank you.
Um, they would be undersized lots. We talked about this a little bit last time.
Yep.
Um, so they, they have a minimum lot area, potential variance issue there, as well as road frontage. They're, they're gonna subdivide the, the lot as it is now, including this portion of this unnamed or, or abandoned road. So the lot, the road frontage is pretty limited here, so I think it might be important to understand if they're gonna share a driveway, or how that's gonna work out, or, or what the intent is with the site itself. And potentially, um, step back, step back early.
What are the, the other lots sizes in the neighborhood? They kind of look large, just from what I'm seeing.
Yeah, they're, they'd be undersized lots.
Yes, but-
They're, they're, they're all about, you know, there's a lot of them that are acre, which is the same size.
When we do undersize, approve sometimes undersize if the neighborhood, the rest of the neighborhoods like that.
Well, that's a ZBA decision.
Yeah, I-
Yeah.
But we can have an opinion.
Yeah, the ZBA, you know, we're not gonna be saying for any positive thing about it.
The lot, the lot right next door and a couple doors down are probably the smaller of the whole neighborhood, and they're a third and a half acre, but most of them are an acre.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jim, are you here to represent this?
I am. For the applicant, Jim Lynn Hill, three, three more rows, one more.
Hey, Jim.
Have you, have you seen the, does he see the report, Jim?
There's no report.
No, there's not, we're, we're reviewing it for completeness, to set the hearing.
Yeah, I think it's on today, it's deemed incomplete.
Right.
But we're certainly amenable to the reasonable suggestions of the board is that, uh, access and, uh, I, I don't, and I don't think the lots that we're proposing are out of scale with the neighborhood. I, I think I've been involved in a couple of projects in the vicinity that we did similar things. It, this only works because there are two residences on this property. And, uh, that's what, we're just looking to separate the two residences from each other.
Okay, so what, um, what date are you looking for, for public hearing?
April twenty-fifth.
April twenty-fifth?
That's the fourth one.
Fourth one.
That is the fourth one?
Yes.
We okay with that? Okay. April twenty-fifth, Jim, public hearing.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion? Motion by, well, motion by Tom.
I'll second.
Second by George, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, all in favor, we said that? Yes, six in favor, one absent.
If that'd be powerful, that would double the top legislative. At least there's no pie back credit or-
Teresa, you are one oh three, County Road Thirty-Nine, for completeness, number fourteen.
Uh, yes, so we had a pre-submission conference for this application, which is immediately adjacent to the Burger King parcel on County Road Thirty-Nine in the fall. We adopted a pre-submission conference report that had recommended that the, um, proposed fifteen thousand square foot, uh, medical office building be reconfigured so that the parking is in the rear. And while the applicant has submitted site plan documents for formal site plan, application approval, that has all the technical elements required by the town, um, it doesn't address the planning board's recommendations to put the building in the front. Uh, it still shows the plan in nearly exact configuration as it was in the pre-submission conference, which is inconsistent with the twenty fifteen County Road Thirty-Nine corridor study, which was adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. So, um, I am recommending it be deemed incomplete, so that it's revised, so it's consistent with the pre-submission conference report and the County Road Thirty-Nine, uh, plan. Also, the applicant resubmitted the traffic study that was provided with the pre-submission conference report application, which did not, uh, which we asked for spring or fall counts. And then, uh, looking further into the traffic study, just to review it again, I realized that they didn't actually include the traffic counts associated with the Liberty Gardens change of zone application, which is directly across the street, so that does need to include that information as well. Um, so, again, while they did provide all the technical elements, they did not address the pre-submission conference report requirements.
Can I just ask you about Liberty Gardens?
Yes.
What's the status of it? Is that the affordable?
There's no decision yet.
There is no decision yet. It's, it's the, uh, find, uh, FEIS was submitted, but no decision has been made.
It'll accept it by the town board, too.
It was accepted by the town board, yes.
The prior town board.
It's prior town board.
Uh, just, just for clarification, um, as part of the FEIS, they did reduce the Liberty Gardens from sixty units to fifty, but again, it's fifty units.
And we still don't know what's gonna happen with the rest of the church property.
Correct. Correct.
Right, well, we did a refer, a fairly complete, it was complete report, referral on the occasion.
Yes, it was a very extensive pre-submission conference report.
So Carl Benincasa, you're back again. Why don't you just-
I swear I'd leave after this. I used to sit all day here.
I know. Are you looking for relief of the traffic data right now?
That's part of it, yeah.
But Carl-
Tom, have you read this one?
It's not as thick as this one we've got.
But we just said, we're saying again.
So, uh, understood. So, uh, we'll try to get supplemental information on, uh, this was done in August, again, which was generally considered the busiest time. We'll try to get supplemental information. I don't know how we're gonna get traffic impact study on something that hasn't been approved yet, but we will try to get shoulder season data like we did suggested for the other one. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. So that, and then, uh, they were recommendations about placement, they weren't requirements. You know, whether or not the board prefers the location of this building and the size of this building, it does conform to zoning, and that's not a reason to deem it incomplete. When we had that pre-submission report, I, we discussed that, and we limited it to recommendations because you understood that it was your preference, not a requirement. I can't force my applicant's hands, this is what the applicant wanted, but you cannot deem something incomplete because it didn't, it, it's not exactly what you wanted, though it meets the code.
It's deemed incomplete because of the traffic, though, so.
That's different. The, the presentation was that it was deemed incomplete for both, so if we can get, say that that is not a reason to deem it incomplete, we will modify the traffic.
Well, but Teresa is referencing the County Road Thirty-Nine study, which very clearly states parking for new construction is to be in the rear of building, and that's what's pretty clear, right, um-
That's correct.
I don't know the exact language is, but-
Yes, and, and again, this is an element of the comprehensive plan, so if the project is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, you know.
Is it a type-one action?
It is a type-one action.
It wasn't codified, though.
How do we deem it complete until we've done SECR?
No, I, she's saying the right thing. It's, you're gonna do SECR next, when you have all the information.
Well, we can't deem it complete. We can't deem it complete until we do SECR.
Right, but you need, they need this information, traffic being one aspect of it, but the compliance, if he chooses not to do that, when you do SECR and you say, are you in compliance with the master plan, it's gonna be, there's an impact.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, you know, it, it, yeah, again, it has all the technical elements with respect to the actual site plan application, it's site plans themselves. But Carl, I don't want you to go down the road and, and, and then it not be viewed favorably because it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And I, you know, that's, I'm trying to save you some heartache here.
Does this sound for complete with the-
Yes, yes.
But we can't deem it complete until we've done SECR, correct?
Right, there's, you would not be deeming this complete today, because even if you thought you had everything with the traffic and stuff, you would coordinate SECR, because it's a type-one action.
Yeah.
That would be the next step, we would get the county to weigh in, um, yeah, on it, so that is the very least.
So let's start, start SECR, though, right? Is that where we were at?
No, I would not do that without the traffic information, because you're gonna be sending that traffic information also to the county.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we're not, so just, we're not doing completeness, would we start?
No, we're deeming it incomplete.
Incomplete.
Yes, correct.
So, Carl, you have a-
But not, but it's because of SECR and traffic, right?
Right.
SECR.
On the technical issue of incompleteness, I would agree.
Thank you.
Where are we in SECR?
That doesn't mean that that inconsistency's not gonna be an issue at some point.
It could be, but on the technical issue of completeness.
So where are we in SECR on this? Have we coordinated?
No, because it's incomplete.
It's incomplete. We have to deem it complete and get the traffic information first, then coordinate the traffic.
You have to submit the traffic information-
We need SECR to be complete, right?
Right.
Admit, we're deeming it incomplete. Once we get the traffic information and potentially a revised site plan, depending on whether we get it or not- on whether we get it or not, then we will coordinate SECR, and then we can proceed.
We go from there.
Yeah.
What do we do, can we do SECR now?
We need the traffic information.
I would prefer the traffic court to county, when you do the coordination of it.
Oh, okay.
I would definitely...
What, well, what if the, is that sufficient? Do you still need the extra traffic information if you're just submitting that to the county for review, for their review?
Well, would you be hiring a...
Maybe.
I would, I would anticipate we would need to hire a traffic consultant.
So then why do we have to do it when you're gonna have a consultant do it?
No, because you're gonna submit numbers to us, and our consultant looks at those numbers and says...
Yeah, but I'm saying, but until we say that, we, why are we saying the numbers are insufficient when you haven't had that reviewed yet? That's all I'm saying.
Because you just heard all these other cases that came, and they need the full numbers, and you've already said that they don't include that, they just, they're looking at August, and you know that the board is looking for the shoulder season to be incorporated, right?
So we're anticipating that your expert is going to say that?
No, they just said it.
I know, but, okay, all right, Chris.
I might suggest, though, there is a stud, traffic study for Liberty Gardens.
Yeah?
We've already foiled for everything in the area, so hopefully...
Yeah, so maybe they have 2022 counts that you could extrapolate, I'm interested. Good heavens.
Yeah, no, we submitted a foil with that exact idea.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Claire.
Don't get the cemetery.
What?
Don't get the cemetery, I said.
Don't get it?
Don't get their traffic at Liberty. I'm trying to, I'm trying to make you laugh, Carl, I'm getting a hard...
Only on Sundays.
It's a long day.
People only go there on Sundays.
But as, as concerning the design, I mean, your applicant is dead set on having this, because it's, it goes counter to the 2015, I know you had an old application on this.
That's what, we were using the 2000, I think it was 2000 application.
Yeah, but that's 24 years old.
We understand. I understand your points.
Yeah.
I will continue to reiterate.
You know, you could get tripped up later on this, why not address it now?
Yeah.
The bottom line is the traffic's gonna go in the back, whether it's gonna happen after full-blown EIS, environmental back statement.
You mean the parking?
The park, I'm sorry, the parking, it's gonna go in the back, so, you know.
So, you know, why make yourself crazy, Carl?
I'll put yourself through that.
Put yourself through it. All right, so, motion to deem this incomplete by Gloria, and second by Craig, all in favor, opposed, extensions, six in favor, one absent. Carl, don't hit, don't hit any traffic going home. Go very slow, Carl. And do not use your phone.
It's not vague, there's no traffic.
Oh, man. Can I take, uh...
Thanks, Carl.
Claire?
Out of order, 'cause I have an applicant for 16, and then we'll go back to 15, is that okay?
For 16?
Yeah, for the extension.
15 was done.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm out, my numbers are off.
15 we did, 16 is, uh, Manhattan.
Are you talking eight, Midhampton?
Yeah, can you just table that for a second, and I'll do, uh, Peron.
Seventeen.
Yes, seventeen, thank you.
Peron, Stephen Peron.
Yes, so Bob Smith is here for this. I just, we're doing an extension, let me show you the plan. It's a three-lot subdivision, it got a, a pre-submission report in 2022, and he's stuck with the health department still on this one. And he's asking for an extension, yeah, for every year. This one's in Shinacock Hills, I'm sorry, I've got four copies, if you don't want.
Right, right in the corner of, um...
Yeah.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Do it three lots.
This is Bob Smith, this is Swarzenholman for Dr. Peron. This application was done back in the eighties and approved by the health department, and the owner sold the property, never finished it. So, the new owner sat on it for a number of years, and then finally decided he wanted to go back. We resubmitted the application here, basically the same application that was approved in, I think it was 86, 88, and then went to the health department. Well, dealing with the health department is kind of like trying to eat jello with chopsticks. You just, there's no, there's no control over there, there's nobody in charge, and you get a report back from an assistant trainee who knows that on page one it says, red is blue. And so you correct everything to make it red is blue, then she gets it and turns the page and notes the, the change, orange and blue make red, back the way you were, and that's where we are. We've been going around with the health department now for well over a year.
A year.
Over a year. And then they came through, the last thing was, oh, you have to fix the system on the original house, so you have to give us a new application, as a residential application, to fix that system before we'll go back to the subdivision plan. I mean, it's, there's no control over there, they're just running around in circles.
It's not the, uh...
That's the aerial, yes, yes. So they're designing it to keep the house, and the other two lots would be...
The two lots would be up to the north.
Yeah, adjacent to the river.
Okay, so you'll be for an extension for a year?
You see that?
One-year extension.
Yeah, subject to the requisite, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, everybody for turning in motion.
I'd like to make one comment, I've been sitting here for a while, and I used to be here all the time, we haven't been here a lot lately, there's a lot of...
Bob, it's good to see you, I haven't, I didn't make a visit until later.
Well, there's, there are a lot of new, young surveyors who come out here and do a lot of work, and that's why we don't do it. Eventually, we wind up doing the work over.
From the old stuff.
And that's where you see it. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
You're welcome.
Motion for one-year extension by George, second by Dennis, all in favor, opposed extension, six in favor, one absent. Claire, you wanna do the eight, number 16, eight Midhampton?
Yeah, so this is a, I'm gonna give you a draft resolution, see if you like it. So this is an application in the village of Quogue, but it's on the border of East Quogue, so there was referral required by the village of Quogue to the town of Southampton.
Yes, guys, for our two sits.
Yes. So, um, I think they've done a good job, especially with regard to, um, establishing a significant buffer to the east. So there's existing buildings on the property here, um, this is the area here, and I have one copy of the area, I looked it up.
Are these the three Jagondo buildings, 10,000 square feet?
They're going to propose, um, light industrial buildings, it's a light industrial zone, uh, according to the village. Yeah, but that's the one, it's, that's, if you wanna see closer. So there's existing buildings on the site, but they're gonna demolish those buildings, and they're consolidating the buildings to the western portion of the property, away from the residential uses, and away from our border of East Quogue. So that buffer on the west that they're gonna re-vegetate is at least 100 feet, which is pretty significant. In their code, it's even 50, so I think it's a, it's a good proposal for the property. So I wrote a resolution just supporting it because of the buffers, um, but I'm not sure if you had any other questions.
What's the size for the parcel?
The size of the parcel.
Just say.
Um, that's...
Um, a something, something, we should fill that in.
Okay. It's 19.1 acres.
So lot coverage, I'm assuming, even with these large buildings, is okay? Do we know?
Um, I didn't look at them, but I could look at their code if you'd like.
They are huge.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was shocked to see that there would be that much in Quogue, I didn't realize it was...
60,000 square feet, 31, 82,000 square feet?
This is their industrial area, you know, if you see, um, this, um, Midhampton is their industrial park, you know, for the village of Quogue.
Yeah, I know it well.
You know what?
I think the, you had, you had shared, I think, the SECR that they had sent or created, you know, my comments were, that said no impact on traffic. Now, there's, I counted, I believe, or it said on the survey, it says it here somewhere, there's 255 parking spaces.
Wow.
And no impact on traffic. I question that, so I think, you know, whatever the process is, I think they need to go back and revisit that.
Yeah, I think we do have planning concerns, Claire, that being one of them.
Tried to get across 104 lately.
Yeah.
Also complicated by many, many more events at the Quogue, while I'm here. Just starting from this.
Just getting over 104 together.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a rush hour, like, here.
Yeah.
It's not a four, it's good. I have somebody waving me through, expecting that I got there first, and, you know, like, I'm not going first.
Either a light or something, it could be needed there soon.
At the Old Country Road intersection, this one?
At 104. We're never gonna get a light over there.
Maybe we should make a recommendation, I should think about a signal.
Signal? Yeah, but that's, that's state, oh, that's county.
It's county.
But it would certainly, begin, it would certainly slow down the Quogue, you know, like, welcome to Quogue, and now you're not on Sunrise Highway anymore.
It's posted at 25 miles per hour, so cops can be acting.
And you could save the summer traffic ticket with the police cars sitting on Indian bike or something, like, not very well.
So, what would you like me to say? So, um, I can say planning has concerns about the impact on traffic and on the adjacent intersections, possibly looking into the, um...
Yeah, the village, maybe they can get a light in, bit more...
You might want to reference how many parking spaces there are, what'd you say, Tom? 225?
Two, 255, I think it says it on the, on the plan.
A lot of vehicles.
Yeah.
I mean, wouldn't it?
And they, following up on your thought, Claire, is, you know, if there's concern, they may wanna look whether appropriate traffic control is necessary at the intersections, at the adjacent intersections.
Maybe.
Uh, traffic.
That's stop signs, traffic signals, all comes under that umbrella.
Stop sign, signals, okay.
Right, at least they could look at it.
Hey, at least we're, we're putting them on notice.
So that, I wanted to ask you about the process, 'cause I've never been involved in sending this to a village, so we're just...
I think they're, Carl's going to a no man's land usually, but this time, Dennis gave it to me, and I was like, you know what?
I just take a picture and just blow it up.
It's a side plan.
So we send it to...
I think the planning board will have comments.
Their village planning board, and they take a look at our comments.
It's like us sending things to Southern County Planning Commission, right? A lot of times it comes out with no comment, local determination.
They have to coordinate, don't they, because?
They have to do the referral because of the being within 500 feet.
But don't they have to coordinate also?
But isn't it because it's a change zone or something for them? If it was, as a right, they wouldn't be notifying us with it?
They would be.
Or as a right?
They would be notifying the town board, and that's not usual, but this time...
For as a right?
Yeah.
Would this be a type one action?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
No.
Not by their code?
Not for the village?
I don't know what their code says.
Not for the village, maybe not.
Not on the state list, type one? 250 parking space?
I think it's 15, 250.
So you may wanna, you may wanna also include approximately mile and a half to the west, um, I think there's an approved workforce housing facility of 80-plus units. So, the cumulative effect on that road might be rather substantial.
Has it, has it been approved, is it?
Yeah, they approved that, right?
That one, I think it's been approved.
I believe it was, I think it was, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. How about if it brings us back?
There's no deadline for the comments?
As far as I know, no.
Okay.
If there are deadlines, I'm going to send a letter that says the planning board has concerns and will forward a comments. But if so, if so, and if I need to have this rushed back, I'll have Anthony handle it at the next meeting and do a draft based on your comments that you just had.
Okay.
Yep, we'll leave it like that. You're good with it?
Yeah, no action.
Yeah.
Um, and then I just have plans that were signed for the T-Mobile, I don't even know what number that was.
Um, I signed, I signed everything that was on the table.
Yeah, I saw it, thank you.
Coral Partners, Prenta, Prenta's up.
Oh, Prenta.
And what about Anthony's, 23 Crowley?
Each of our Bible churches off, number 20.
What about 23?
23 Crowley, yeah.
That's the signature.
That's a signature.
Signature.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Did you sign them?
I signed everything that was on the table.
So let's review the signatures, Claire, while you're here.
Yeah.
It was 20, 200 North Main, McGee, excuse me, Crowley, and T-Mobile.
Okay.
Okay, so we're acknowledging number 23 Crowley and number 24 T-Mobile, so there's just those two, right?
And the add-on of 200 North McGee.
Right.
Okay, add-on, 200 North McGee. So acknowledging those signatures?
Yep.
And now we're going back to...
Coral.
Coral.
Coral Partners.
Prenta.
This is a, um, a site plan reapproval for Coral Partners, it's Ford Station Road in Watermill. They've...
That's those, those offices behind the...
Next to that other new, uh, complex with all the offices there.
But it's a vacant lot, right?
The vacant lot in red, yeah.
That's before you make the term.
Yeah.
Uh, the original application was approved in May of 2018, and they've, uh, they've gotten to administrative, uh, re-approve those extensions, and now they're asking for a, a two-year, the official two-year extension to 2026, um, I guess to keep it fresh, I thought the, maybe someone would be here, but, um, they're not here to talk about it, but they...
So a two, two-year extension from today?
Two-year extension, they're, you know, the, the lot's been sold in 2019, I believe, um, but they're proposing no change, they just wanna, they just wanna keep it fresh. So now we take them to 2026, yeah.
We take them to 2026.
March 28, 2026, yeah.
28, 2026. Motion for the extension? Motion by Gloria, and second by Craig, all in favor, opposed, extension, six in favor, two absent. And then, Prenta, 495, County Road 39, SECR.
Yes, this is for coordinating SECR. The application was received in January and February, and was sort of deemed incomplete because we needed some other materials that weren't quite addressed since the pre-submission report, um, from 2023. Since then, the applicant's resubmitted, and they, they have everything now, so we're recommending...
It's that corner parcel over there.
It's the corner parcel, Surf Pro, it's a low-end lot, highly business. They're proposing demoing all of the existing structures and...
Demoling, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and a new...
Oh, yes, they had a... Oh, yes, they had a-
But not the main building, just as-
No, all of it, yeah.
All of it, yeah.
Oh, all of it.
And there, there's elevations, and I have a lot of stuff.
Elevation toward the side.
There's a it's an eight thousand, hundred and twenty square foot commercial building. Um, office and, uh, office and warehouse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These are the elevations. Since the pre-submission, the one thing they did add, which the board recommended-
Yeah.
It is in the package yet, so it's all-
It's armored?
It is, yeah.
So very nice, they did a very nice job with it.
Yes, awesome. And they added the, you know, they did the porch, they added, um, since you last seen it, they've added these clear story windows at the east and west end of the warehouse portion of the building.
That's good.
Um, and, you know, we'll, we'll send this to ARB, we'll look at it a little more once we, uh, do SECR and deem it complete.
So is this the front, facing County Road thirty-nine?
I believe so.
It is, yes.
Is forcing?
Yeah, that's sort of the corner of the view from the corner.
And then that is going down-
McGee Street.
McGee.
More work on the left elevation, okay.
That's the one that presents toward McGee.
Oh, yeah, this is, so this one.
I mean, the windows are, step in the right direction.
Here?
Yeah, that's the one that presents toward McGee.
Yeah, and there's, uh, there's, you know, there's trees, existing trees.
Definitely something to break it up.
Yeah.
And then, uh, maybe go to the ARB. In the meantime, we could go, come on up. In the meantime, maybe you could go to the ARB about, like, maybe having some, something here, because this is, this is going to present.
Can we have your name for the record, please?
Bill Kelly, for the applicant. If you look at the landscape plan.
I have that.
Yeah. You can't see that elevation from the road.
Or you have small points to, you know.
Yeah, so McGee Street. This is McGee Street.
Yeah.
So the plantings that we can leave there, we're going to leave on McGee Street. The sanitary system's going in here, so we're just removing what needs to be removed for the sanitary system. So, uh, we need the, uh, you know, the, the site plan, sanitary plan to show where that is, but that's, sanitary system's going right here.
I have it here.
I'm sorry, the sanitary system, here, it's shown on here, on the landscape plan, so there's the sanitary system. But all these, all these trees that can remain will remain, so it's buffered from the standpoint, you don't really have a view of that wall from, from County Road thirty-nine. You don't really have a view of that wall going down the east street.
Just looking to see what the, um, plantings are.
Yeah, there's, I draw that often, and I could, if I really look hard, I can see the cars.
If you really look hard.
Yeah.
But at thirty miles an hour, you shouldn't be looking that hard.
Keep your eyes on the road.
Well, you should be stopped right there.
Well, that's, that's-
Well, no, I'm actually going north, so.
You're not on yourself.
So that building is behind, is behind that, uh, row of plants?
That, yeah.
Oh, there we go.
Here.
Yeah. The, uh, the front part of the building is exposed. But the warehouse portion of the building would be behind. This being the warehouse built part of it, and then the front part-
The warehouse is this part.
That's that part, yeah, that's correct. And then they had us run this, um... I think we ran the stone down the side on that as well, yeah. So we ran, we ran the stone way, so.
Stone, okay, we'll do that.
Yeah, so we were after that.
He's running, he said he's going to have stone here.
And he has, you can see him looking here.
Yeah, it's all kind of the same color, you know.
So what's, we're coming into this property, the existing driveway?
There's actually two accesses from the stand, well, you're coming in from the existing curb cut off of County Road, County Road thirty-nine.
But there's also a McGee Street.
And then off of McGee Street, there's also, um...
Entrance or exit?
Uh, the one off of McGee Street would be more of an egress, so it'd be more of an exit, uh, because-
Well, then you get to the light if you're going east or west on twenty thirty-nine.
Then you get to the light, and you can go left or right.
Yeah.
Where the one coming off of McGee Street would really be for anything that's west, um, the one coming off of County Road thirty-nine.
Would be westbound.
Would really be anything westbound, yeah.
Incoming traffic and westbound traffic.
Does it include that other part, that other building there? Is that all one parcel?
No.
That's a separate parcel.
Oh, the southern back corner? No, I think you're talking about this one.
The, the, the property to the east.
I think you're talking about this-
The old street. The, the, yeah, the old street, yeah.
This year, yeah.
Yeah, it does include that, right?
It does not.
I see the lot line.
And I think this was, like, informal cross-access that we talked about, and I think it was going to get formalized somehow.
Yeah, it would, like, it would have to, uh...
I made, I made the owner aware of the fact, and I, I talked to the owner's attorney
Right.
that did the closing, because what we were looking for was, we were looking for, um, number one, if there was any cross-access, or if there was any deed right-of-way.
Right.
Or what used to be the upholstery shop. Yes, that question is there.
And I think we had talked about making sure that was-
Yeah, the, you need cross-access.
But as far as having cross-access, I, let's, you know, I said, yeah, that's probably going to be a requirement, but that's more typical.
Right.
Law enforcement.
Yeah.
So those trailers back there, that little bit, is that all coming out?
You could see the lot line.
Yeah, I don't think the trailers are still there. That, that is from prior to, that, that seems to be prior to new ownership.
This is from twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, they, they purchased the property in twenty twenty-two.
So that's all gone, that back corner?
It's all gone. We're, we're going to a clean slate. I'm saying everything's gone. We're, we're starting from scratch.
And you're going to have some plantings, what's the setback back there?
Uh, there's, uh...
Is that here?
There's a, there's a buffer, there, there would be, normally there would be a buffer, but since it's a pre-existing, uh, condition.
It's long.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that'll-
How many feet is that again? Is that, um, twenty feet, I think?
Well, that applies-
Yeah, that's twenty feet.
The, the school property, doesn't it?
It is, yeah. That's the school property, just as a norm.
Yeah.
And it's, some of that is wooded, and then there's play, a playground.
Yeah, it's, it's heavy woods and then a playground in the school, so.
So you'd have a twenty-foot setback.
We have a twenty-foot, we have a twenty vegetated, twenty-foot vegetated buffer.
Okay, and then your driveway out, what's the width on that?
Uh, it's twenty feet.
Twenty.
Which is, that's what's required.
And you have enough parking here?
We do.
Yeah, they, uh, that was one of the items they had to address since the pre-submission. There's twenty-two spaces, which in fact is, I think, one greater than what you need. Two accessible spaces, uh, and that, that, that's calculating for special exception use for, uh, every five hundred square feet plus six employees.
Yeah.
Um, so that'll bring them up to twenty-two.
And what about some, um, climate action plan, sustainable?
Are you solar?
Solar?
I had, well, you know, it, it, it's, it's not in the current plan. It's not in the current plan.
Is there some possibility for it?
You get good sun.
Well, it all depends, you know, we have a sloping, you know, you need south sun, and you need south roof. Uh, we do have some south roof, but, you know, here's the thing, solar, uh, that's pretty much an owner condition, I think. Um, two reasons. The architectural aspect of it, you know, it's kind of unsightly. And that's the, the one on the side of the roof that faces County Road thirty-nine. And then the other part of that is, you know, there's a lot of, everybody's on it, but, but there's a lot of selling points to it. But it's kind of a selling point that comes from the people that are providing it that isn't necessarily advantageous to the owner. And, and then the other part of that is-
I'm an owner of solar. I'm going to disagree with you.
But it's tax credits, you know, they, they, they sell a lot of it on, on the back.
I haven't, I've paid thirty dollars in a year for my electricity.
Understood.
It's, it's, it's going to be code soon.
Okay, but it's, it's not now.
It's not now, but let's get into the code.
Yeah, and then the other part, you know, of course, the other part of solar, it only works when the sun's out, so, until they-
No, it doesn't.
And now they have the battery.
Cloudy day in February, my solar.
I was actually getting solar today in the rain.
So, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, maybe once we officially, after SECR deem it complete, we can put it in as a consideration.
What kind of a roof are you planning to put on?
It's, uh-
Standing seam.
It's a standing seam, um...
A metal one?
Yeah, charcoal, charcoal and copper.
I think that's-
We're at solar, I, we're just a view of the IAS system, oh, please, consider an IAS system.
Now it's code.
Again, it's, it's not concerned, right now it's not, not code, so if it's not code, it's-
Yeah, it's not.
We can only strongly recommend.
We're asking applicants, applicants.
Understood. I, I leave that to the, I leave that to the owner, okay?
Yeah.
Because that's, that's an owner decision to make.
Unless, until it's code and then, and then we impose it.
Yeah, we've, we've already recommended, change the code, so.
Understood. Current code is, is not code.
So if you were, if you were amenable to it, where would you put it? On which portion of the building?
Well, if you talk to anybody that's selling you solar, they're going to tell you they want it on a south-facing roof. So the only place I would be able to put it that's a south-facing roof-
Is the warehouse, right?
Is on the warehouse, but I wouldn't put it there, I'd put it on the other side. There's, there's another elevation where the, where the warehouse extends beyond. Here's, here's the main building, and that particular-
That's the front part.
You're looking, you're looking at this section of the roof.
Come up here.
Point it.
No, right here. So this, this is where I would put it.
The section that comes out beyond the porch?
Yeah.
Okay, then we're not seeing this photo.
We're not seeing that.
Yeah, yeah, you're not seeing it in that element. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So that would be thirty-six feet.
Mm-hmm. That could be nice.
Is there, um, so there's a, a standalone sign here?
That's an existing stand, standalone sign.
Right, are they, are you proposing anything on the building?
Not at this time, yeah. If we were, but at this time, we're not. But if we were, it would probably go in this space right here. Between the two, between the two.
Yeah. Um, we're looking at this, I think, once we get into past SECR, um, we'll look at this a little more. You'll probably want to look at the landscaping and sort of dissect everything.
Is this type two, or?
Uh, this is unlisted.
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 Um, so if we, if we get SECR going, and then we can deem it complete, and then we can start really digging into the site a little bit more and going to ARB and all that stuff. Um, but I think you're going to want to look at the plantings and, and all of that. These were, everything essentially from the, um, pre-submission report was addressed, the landscape plan, which was included, the lighting plan, uh, parking, the archaeology report.
It's all completed, we're-
Yeah, it's, it's ready to go. It's, it's meeting all the submission requirements, so we can go ahead and now coordinate.
We've checked all the boxes.
Unlisted, do we do long form or short?
Yeah, long. And we have a long form. They've submitted that.
Long form. So one of the items will be energy, impact on energy.
Yeah, I, I, I still have yet to, fully, fully add.
If you have easements here, north property line, east labor, cross-access, what?
Yeah, I just put it in there so we can make sure that the applicant and the owner look into any easements that may already exist, especially, um, especially here, where, where the cross-access is. This is shared, and it's sort of become like this informal thing, uh, where-
In the front of that building?
Yeah, it's like a, it's like a combined access into both properties, right?
The driveway just sort of straddles the property line, and they, they sort of both use it for checking in and out.
Way, way back when, way back when. The, both properties were owned by the same person. When they did the subdivision, both, both properties were owned by the same person. So.
So what, what are we doing here today, I s-
We're-
Coordinating.
Coordinating SECR, yeah.
Any other?
I thought coordinating is optional.
I'm sorry?
I thought it's optional on, uh, unlisted. Coordination is optional?
I don't know about that.
Unlisted?
It's unlisted, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought coordination is optional.
Oh, coordination is optional? Well, I think we would want to, we want to, you know, it's the, the curb cut on the county road, and we definitely want to send it to, um, the county, uh, DPW and, and, uh, Department of Health, so we want to send it to them.
I need, I need the, the letter for the Department of Health to get, we've worked through all, everything on the Department of Health.
Yeah.
I just need a letter of non-jurisdiction from, for, for the negative debt that I can submit to that in order to get file help department.
I reviewed it with Claire. She, we definitely want to coordinate and, and, uh-
So we need those coordinations before we deem anything.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Anything else you're missing here?
No, there were some minor items that can become part of, um...
Lighting.
Maybe conditions. The lighting is in here.
Yeah.
Um, I think there's, maybe time of use might not have been called out, but-
And where your light, where's the lighting?
All the lighting is on the building, uh...
Yeah, do I have it? I don't think I have it in there.
It's the photometric is what the, uh, landscape. But all, all the, all the lighting is on the building, so.
Who's?
Underneath the over, underneath the porch, we have down lighting. Um, over here, I think we have-
Oh, I can pull it up on the computer.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go.
There are sconces that are completely shrouded, down, downlit, and then there's, uh, there's an art light on the sign. Or like an art top, style light?
Uh, the only lighting on the sign is the current lighting that's on the sign. I, I, yeah, couldn't tell you.
I can pull that from the old setup, we didn't change the lighting plan, right?
Yeah, just, just for this purposes, yeah, we didn't change the lighting plan. We changed the size of the building, we reduced it.
Landscape. Is that this one? Yeah.
Yeah. They don't have a bunch of ones and twos?
That's the, um, photometrics we're talking about, right?
So the-
So this is the, uh...